...of the Enfield Board of Education for June 25, 2024. We have a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance with Dr. Kalman.
The Fourth of July is fast approaching. It's a time to reflect on how precious is the gift of democracy, which was paid for by the blood of generations of Americans. Let's keep our democratic heritage in mind as we go to the polls to cast our votes this Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Fire evacuation. In the unlikely event of the fire, you can exit out the back doors of the chambers and out to the parking lot, or you can go out these doors, take a left down the stairs and out to the parking lot. And also, the bathrooms upstairs are being worked on. So if you need to use the lavatory, you need to go downstairs. And I guess the elevator is working again, so.
It's a trade.
It's a trade, right. Okay. So, Andy, can we have the roll call, please?
Dr. Kalman?
Here.
Mrs. Gushman?
Here.
Mr. Genitis?
Here.
Mr. Culver?
Here.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mrs. Pickett?
Here.
Mr. Ryder?
Here.
Mrs. Akri?
Here.
Chairwoman Riley?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Four guests, we do not have any this evening. Superintendent's report, Mr. Longy.
Thank you. This will be quick. I know we have a very full agenda tonight. Enclosed in your packet is a flyer about the 2024 summer lunch program that both the Enfield Food Shelf and the Enfield Loaves and Fishes will provide for Enfield students during the summer. This program started on June 24th and will run throughout the summer vacation for 10 weeks. Students can pick up lunches Mondays and Fridays from 11:00 to noon at 96 Alden Avenue. So I hope our families take advantage of that. I want to thank our partners that also work on that. For summer meetings, the board will hold a special meeting on Tuesday, July 2nd, and on Monday, July 8th, in executive session to conduct interviews for the superintendent position. Also, as a reminder, the August 25th meeting will be at 5:00 and will be held in council chambers, and that's because of the concerts once again. And for update, I just want to wish our families and our students a safe and happy summer. And also, we just want to extend our best wishes to Kathy Zalecki and her family as she's dealing with a loss right now, and just wish them the best. So I'll be by myself tonight, but she's sorely missed. It doesn't probably look the same from your angle without her here, but we missed her already. Also, a lot of parents have reached out and said, is there anything we can do? What can we do this summer? Can we help at all with the amount of layoffs, with the amount of staff that we had to cut? So here's a real simple thing. If this is maybe more of a dad than interim superintendent, if you're looking for something to do, I would recommend read. Read to your kids as much as you can. If you have students that can read themselves, sit and listen to them read. Go to the library, or go to Amazon, whatever, wherever you go, find some books, load up on books. Read as much as you can. Have your kids read as much as you can. It's a great time to spend time with your children, as well as in preparation for our new reading program come the beginning of the year. You're going to hear a lot of reading tips and ideas and programs. So let's get started this summer, I say. Let's get going. Let's get going reading. Let's read with our family. And again, I wish everyone a happy and safe summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Longy. Do we have audiences? Is there a sheet out there? Thank you very much. Okay. So, audiences is five minutes, four minutes for each. Yeah, sorry. Four minutes. And then you, wow, why can't I find this one? Okay. Any resident or taxpayer of Enfield, employee of the board, or stakeholder in our school system may address the board here. You have to identify yourself by full legal name and your relationship to the district, and you'll have four minutes. So first up is Danielle Gerard.
All right. Danielle Gerard, Edgewood Drive, parent and community, Enfield community advocate chairperson. I'm actually here tonight because I want to present to you all. I did send out an email, but I wanted to show everybody the Rock the Vote event that we're going to be having on August 24th, right here on the town green. We're really, really excited about this event. This is, this is a nonpartisan event. There's no debates or anything like that that is going to happen. What's really going to happen is that we want to bring the importance of voting to the community, even going ahead and getting, obviously, as many people as we can to register to vote for this event. We're looking to have community groups involved, vendors, food trucks. We're going to get bands. We can't wait to use the band shell. I think this is going to be an awesome and an exciting event. We're going to have different things for kids. We're just, we're really trying to make this a lot of fun. Think 90s Rock the Vote, where MTV was crazy. That's basically, we're looking to just have a lot of fun with this and really educate people on voting and why it's so important. So come November, this November, obviously, we have a big election coming up. But also, for next year, our plan is if this gets really big and good, then our plan is to actually do this again next year and really bring people in to get them to understand that local voting is extremely, extremely important. No matter what party you're on, no matter where you are, down the middle, off to the sides, it does not matter. It's super, super important, and we need to listen to everybody's voices. So, again, this is a great event, and anyone that wants to get involved, we'd love to have that. We are working on getting candidates involved as well to just speak on the importance of voting. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Okay. Next up is Don Reno.
Hello. All right, I guess that's working. All right.
So I just need your name and your.
Don Reno, 7 Pine Crest Road. So, there's been a lot of, from what I've seen, confusion as far as the amount of funds coming in, not to bring up the budget thing, again. But in 2022, the state did change the rules. And I don't know if everybody knows that, but basically, as a town, we are ranked 137th financially out of 169, municipality districts, however you want to call it. And we are supposed to be receiving 76.25%, and that is all. There is no 100% funding anywhere. So I don't know where that misinformation came from. Like I said, this is all back in 2022. The House bill that passed was House Bill 5506. I, that's all I really got to say, so that you guys know how to budget for next season. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. So next up is Maureen Griffin.
Hi, Maureen Griffin, 98 Abbey, parent, taxpayer, homeowner, pain in your butt. That gentleman opened the subject which I wanted to reference, especially the last few weeks and the tenor of the discussions, not only here but in the council chambers. Let me read you something from encyclopedia.com. Rash judgment, an act of mind that on the basis of insufficient evidence attributes something morally discreditable to another or denies something morally credible. We've had an epidemic of that in town. Depending upon someone's knowledge of the facts, I'm not in anyone's head, but I presume there's some that do understand the facts, we look at calumny, the making of false and defamatory statements in order to damage someone's reputation. I would like to know what the attacks on people, the accusations of malfeasance with absolutely no evidence, what that serves other than people's egos and destroying people's reputations. I see no other purpose to it. I think anyone who does not speak out against it is complicit. One thing that has come up is, we need to know, we need to know. Tell us all this information about these new students with special needs, these 78 sped kids. Tell me all your medical information. Oh, I don't have a right to that? The only ones who have a right to what's on a child's IEP or what their needs are or their 504 are those who are actually involved in providing their education. Now, a valid question would be, help me to understand why the costs are so high. And I would have a suggestion to you, Mr. Longy, because I always have suggestions. The presentations that have been done over the past couple of years about explaining indicators and how things are done, perhaps there should be one on how we handle special needs, how a child qualifies for a 504 or an IEP. Correct me if I'm wrong, please, Andy, but in order to get an IEP, from my experience advocating for my children, and that's my frame of reference, they have to have a whole lot of testing, cognitive, emotional, whether they qualify for speech therapy, OT, PT, they have to be worked up and assessed for this. It's not just a, hey, I want my kid to have this. They have to qualify. And it's not a one and done. At a minimum of every three years, the entire battery of testing needs to be repeated. These are not inexpensive things. And when you have too many, not too many, but a number greater than the employees of the district can provide, then you have to outsource it. And as you've said before, that brings the costs up. That doesn't even begin to touch the cost of providing the children the services in school. So I think it would be really beneficial to everyone in town, because I think most taxpayers want to understand. They want to know what's going on and get rid of the noise, get rid of the smoke, get rid of the accusations, the character assassinations. It serves no purpose but to pump up someone's weak ego. So, maybe that could be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Okay. So that is the end of audience participation. Okay. Next up is board comments. Who would like to go first? Anybody want to go first? Go ahead, Mr. Culver.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'll, as we mentioned, we do have a lot on the agenda for tonight, so I'll reserve some more detailed comments as they arise. And I do plan to provide a little more detail on our finance committee report today when we get to Agenda Item 12. That being said, though, I feel like there is a lot to discuss between current events. We didn't have our last meeting, so I probably won't be as brief as I normally am. Our interim superintendent already mentioned it, but just want to relay that there was some sad news and pass our condolences to our board recording secretary on the recent passing of her spouse. And there will be calling hours coming up this weekend here in town. Also, I know this is our second meeting since our change in administration, but I just want to formally welcome Mr. Longy as our interim superintendent, and also Michelle Middleton as our assistant superintendent of curriculum and instruction, now that they've officially started those roles. Also, I wasn't able to attend due to a conflict, but I just want to pass my congratulations to the most recent graduates from Enfield High School, wish them all the best, and good luck on their future endeavors. I want to provide a, just a brief update on what I've been talking about as the transparency initiative that I am advocating for. This is obviously an ongoing process, and it's working through numerous committees, caucuses, and stakeholders. Just one, I guess, pillar of my proposal that I want to share is talking about the volume and quantity of reports that we already send to the state as required either by law or policy. So currently, the board, we don't really see any of these reports. Since I've been elected and have sat here for over six months, the only report I've consistently seen is our suspensin' and expulsion report. So one of the goals of this initiative is to have regular and frequent reporting, either sent directly to the board or have the board carbon copied on this reporting that goes to the state, so that the board will have a better operational picture, and then we can make more informed policy and budget-related decisions. All of these reports, granted that they're non-student-specific and they don't include any confidential information, should also be shared publicly, possibly posted to our website or another area of access, so that the public can see things related to activity, performance, and indicators. So I wanted to give a brief update on that. I also just want to make some general comments on the budget situation that we've been facing. So it's clearly no secret that the Enfield Public Schools District has been stranded on what has been called the fiscal cliff. We were fortunate enough to have an additional appropriation approved by the town council for just over 5.6 million, which is subject to a memorandum of understanding being signed by all parties. And while we do recognize that this puts the town in a precarious financial position, it ensures that the Board of Ed is poised to close out this current fiscal year, which ends on June 30th, where we are supposed to be. Nevertheless, I feel we need to improve our vision and our oversight of the budget throughout the year. We need an ongoing collaborative effort, an effort between the administration, the board, and the council. I do want to take a moment to recognize and thank the council for this, for lack of a better term, bailout, and putting their faith and confidence in the board that we can get out of this financial situation. I do also want to clarify, some of the misinformation that has been floating, that this bailout does not change any of the reductions and cuts that have been made. This money that's granted is for the current fiscal year, not the upcoming fiscal year, which is where all the cuts have been directed to. I also want to briefly recognize ongoing dialogue that's been occurring between elected officials and the public. Everybody up here has received both praise and criticism. It's disappointing to see some of the language and tactics that have been employed, however, I've seen and read individuals reach out to some of us and use the term, quote, disgusting, quote arrogant, and then proceed to publish outright disinformation on social media pages. Everyone is entitled to their own opinions, and we can only do so much to maintain civility outside of these halls. Nevertheless, there are acceptable and reasonable limitations to free speech, specifically defamation of character. This is commonly called libel, slander, and could propose to perpetrators civil liability. Hopefully, this is something that will remind individuals to think before they post. I like to consider a quote from Mahatma Gandhi, and it says, "Speak only if it improves upon the silence," end quote. That being said, I do also want to remind the public that all of us up here are unpaid volunteers, spending time away from other obligations, time away from friends, time away from family, and that we are here, and only here, to support public education, our community, and our children. Following on from this, I do want to ensure that the public is aware that we also have limitations on how we can dialogue, specifically when it involves a quorum of this board, or more, with a quorum of this board being five or more members. There is case law in Connecticut. There is a case, Mauer versus Board of Education member for Regional School District 1. It came up through the Freedom Information Commission in 2013, was adjudicated in 2014, that interpreted the Connecticut Freedom of Information Act and how it relates to written records of a public agency, and it happened to also be a Board of Education. And it defined what could be considered an unlawful unnoticed or non-public meeting of said agency. Case went on to, if a board member sends an email communication to a quorum of the board talking about a matter which the board has supervision, it could potentially be a violation of the FOI based on being, again, an unnoticed, non-public meeting. There is also a recent case that just came down in 2024, Gookins versus a member of Town of Representatives in Groton, where the FOIC basically reaffirmed that, but said if a member sends emails to a quorum of the board, but nobody else replies to those emails, it is not a violation. I do also want to highlight just some of the political rhetoric that has also been circling and try to bring some additional facts forward. I hear a lot of people saying, put education first, or it seems that the Board of Education is not putting education first. I do want to reaffirm everybody that this is a primary goal of this board. Nothing this board has done or proposed has put education second. We have seen individuals, time and time again, say that they support our teachers, yet actions speak louder than words. Several of the people that have said they support teachers have voted against measures to save teachers, have not necessarily supported thorough and responsible budgeting, and as a matter of fact, have voted in favor of budget cuts and reductions. We have also seen decisions made on this floor that have given blanket authority to administrators to continue making decisions for us outside of the realm of public meetings. Additionally, we've also heard another slogan referred to as, quote, "We are EPS." While this may promote some level of empathy, its value is being diminished when it is broadcast by individuals who are not actually employed by Enfield Public Schools, nor individuals who have not received nonrenewal letters or termination notices. For example, individuals in this board are not at risk of losing their career, nor moving offices, nor their livelihood. When was the last time you've seen a corporate member of a Board of Directors stand outside of their retail store with their frontline employees and say, "We are cashiers, we are sales associates, we are baristas"? Realistically, it does not happen. As the decision-makers, we do not get to play the victim of our own decisions. We, as a Board of Ed, are not educators, and to paint ourselves as such is simply improper in times like this. Lastly, I do want to mention events promoting community involvement and advocacy. I always have and will continue to support public participation, civic engagement, and voter turnout. We actually just happen to have a presentation on it during public comments, but there is an upcoming event called Enfield Rock the Vote on August 24th, from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. here on the town green. That is all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Culver. Who would like to go next?
Thank you, Mrs. Pickett. I appreciate that. No worries. Maybe we just need to start having an order or something. First, thank you, ECA. Food Shelf and Loaves and Fishes, our community is amazing, and I appreciate when folks can come together and do things for the betterment of our community. Thank you, Maureen, for clarifying the reality of special education qualification and services. There is a lot of things being asked that demonstrate folks' non-understanding of the complexity, so I appreciate you putting that to light. Thank you, Don, I think your name was, perfect. And Maureen, you're both are right, school funding and budgeting is confusing, so I would agree with you on that. And I thank you, Phil, for correcting some of the information being shared. I agree that there's a need for an improved process and protocol for budgeting and reporting. I also agree that this board is here to support education. So I have a few overall comments. I do have quite a bit to say, because I feel like there's been a break, but we still have a lot of meetings, so, anyhow. So I am also sad to hear how education funding is becoming a divisive topic in political battle. I sit up here because I believe in public education. It helps not only the students, but our entire community thrive. So for me, this isn't a discussion about political party, but instead a reflection of our community beliefs. This is about what we prioritize, what we determine to put resources into, and how we reflect and strategically plan for that to happen. For too long, Enfield has kicked the can of education. No thoughtful strategic planning went into the rushed closing of schools and reconfiguration that happened over 10 years ago. Our community is still facing the consequences of that, and the reality is that there's been no effort into the dilapidated and struggling schools' infrastructure. So it's no surprise to me that we sit here struggling to meet the needs of our students with minimal investments being offered. I'm tired of stating the factual reasons why we're in financial woes, and I encourage everybody to watch the June 13th joint meeting with the Board of Ed and Town Council. I do thank the Town Council members that voted to support EPS on June 17th. Although I don't want to continue rehashing how we got here, I'm a firm believer that you can't allow harmful and untrue statements left with no correction. During the meeting on June 13th, Republican councilors questioned the integrity of Enfield Public Schools and made unfair and inflammatory comments about Enfield Public Schools' finance staff, board members, and budgeting practices. This is deeply troubling and demonstrates a complete disregard for understanding public education, funding sources, and legal mandates. I know that we're in this situation because there's no way that a school district can function without a budget to support it. The circus that's being created around theories and misinformation is to deflect from the slaughtering that was just completed. It's a deflection to the devastation that they've created. So I refuse to continue to look back. We need to push forward and work on rebuilding and supporting Enfield Public Schools. And for me, in order to move forward, we need to be on the same page about what we've lost and what we're trying to rebuild. I also believe in the power of storytelling. So here's a story about my own children and the reality of what may come. Currently, well, actually not currently, up until a couple of weeks ago, my children sat in classrooms with 22 other students. Their classroom teacher got the support from a math or a literacy specialist who allowed the classroom teacher and this trained professional to pull students in small groups or one-on-one to work on filling gaps and speeding learning up. The reality is, in my kids' classroom, one out of four students may have an IEP or 504. That is potentially over five students in this classroom. For this year, we had a school counselor and social worker who was able to support classroom community, small groups, and individual students in need. We had BTs who provided extra set of hands, but also skilled behavioral intervention and de-escalation strategies. This year, my son participated in invention convention. He did more writing in an after-school club that I've seen him produce in many academic settings. So as I look ahead to next year, I'm worried. My kids might be okay, but will their friends? What about my, what about my son's friend that doesn't have an IEP but sees the counselor often? What about my friend's daughter who's getting additional reading support? Will she still make the cut? Or will he have too few resources to be able to catch students early enough to get them the intervention that they need? Will my kid's teacher be able to manage small group instruction or one-on-one with potentially over 28 students? Will there be any support for the teacher as they implement a new reading program and maybe in a different grade and school due to the bumping that's happening with layoffs? There will be no invention convention, so the dream of improving the Lego sorter will have to wait or be fulfilled in some less exciting way at home with mom and dad instead of with his passionate educators and friends. And the reality is, who knows what adults will be part of my children's learning community? These cuts have the potential to dismantle grade-level teams, school configuration, admin configurations, and so much more. This causes damage that I'm not sure that you can quantify. This is school climate. This is connection and relationship. I know in the end, the amazing Enfield Public School staff, students, families, and PTOs, and our community partners will make the school year happen. There will still be magic. But I refuse to let those who did this think that their actions don't matter or don't hurt. And I refuse for the resilience of our staff and our students to be held up as an example of why cuts don't matter. We are EPS, but we need love and resources, too. So as I look ahead, there are clear systems and structures we need to rebuild, and we need commitment to resources in order to make that happen. I do want to clarify a line item. Phil, you had asked to move some funding to save the middle school sports and ninth grade athletics, and I believe that funding was allocated for four additional Blue Rooms. I've gotten some questions on that. So through the chair to the interim superintendent, can you share where the Blue Rooms will be constructed, if you know that offhand, and a little bit more of like, what is a Blue Room?
So the Blue Room we have is at Crandall, but we also have work at Enfield Street School. We have two new programs going there. We also have work to do at Stowe. But a Blue Room is a de-escalation room. That's when a student who has severe emotional disabilities may need a place to go for their own safety and for staff safety. So it is quite a bit of work to build something like that.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that was clarified. So these are supports for students with disabilities to be able to access the least restrictive environment and stay in their learning environments without an expensive outplacement potentially, which we all know is a budgetary issue. And so these are necessary and often lower-cost, effective strategies for our struggling students. So I do have a few questions regarding some security matters. I know I put these in an email, but I do want to also share these concerns publicly. I do hope those who sit on the Joint Security Committee can take note. So on June 20th, I reached out to the Board of Ed and Town Council leadership with this request. I asked for a Board of Ed update at some point prior to August on the school security model being implemented for the 24-25 school year. As a Board of Ed member, I saw one proposed presentation that was shown to us before the MOU was ever signed or approved, so I have many questions and concerns, and I think it's critical that Enfield Public Schools has a clear understanding of the model being implemented, the staff and personnel responsible, and the execution of the important mandated plans and data collection. I also think that the public deserves to know some of this information. Some specific questions that I have asked is who is responsible for the creation and submission of the school's safety and security plan? How has this been updated based on our armed-guard security model? A part- A partnership with Enfield Public Schools and Enfield PD is critical, especially since staffing and resources are significantly different with this model. I'd like an understanding of what the security model is and what this will look like in implementation. What can our students, our staff, and our families expect? I'll share that after. Hang on. What's the budget? How many staff benefits and overtime? And as of July 1, who will EPS's contact be for school security? Without a plan for this information, we are leaving our schools less secure. There are going to be many changes for the 24-25 school year, and safety and security will need to be attended to differently by our schools. There will be less school personnel and resources, so it's imperative that we have a clear understanding of this so EPS staff can appropriately plan and prepare. I received an immediate response from our mayor that demonstrated his lack of understanding of the issue at hand and our current security model. He claimed that there's no change that we currently have armed people in our schools, which is not true. Our elementary schools do not have police officers, full-time SROs, so it is a change in model. Charlotte, you have been incredibly responsive, and I think that it's important for the public and staff to continue to be informed. You have agreed to my request for an executive session prior to the school starting for a better understanding of our school's security model. You've also shared that the town has allocated $850,000 for this program. I'd still like to request a budget line breakdown of this and monitor the fidelity of the program and actual budget as the year progresses, just as the town is concerned about our financial decisions and investments, I am too. I'm also concerned about data collection and student outcomes. As a Board of Ed, we receive monthly suspension, arrest, and 911 data, like Phil mentioned. However, understanding how our changes in resources and staffing and now a change in security model impacts students is important. I'm hoping we can have clear data collection tools and agreements made in our MOUs so we can review this data disaggregated by student subgroups to help us better understand potential barriers and solutions. It's critical that we understand the impact of these responses on students with disabilities, multilingual learners, and our Black and Brown students. I did notice the street signs on Route 5. It appears as if they're working, but these appear to be regular speed limit signs and say nothing about a school zone. So I don't even know if Route 5 in front of Enfield Street School and the high school have official school zone area markings, and if we could maybe get some help with DOT on that, because actually, I'm concerned those signs are going to reinforce people going pretty fast by our schools during arrival and dismissal time. I also hope that with the new security program, we can look at the role of the SRO, especially at the high school, and see if there's support during arrival and dismissal time. I'm going to end my comments with wishing everyone a restful and restorative summer. We're about to embark on the July 4th holiday where our community engages in a weekend full of celebrations. I also hope our community took the time to reflect on the recent holiday that passed, Juneteenth. While our nation loves to celebrate its freedom, on July 4th, 1777, it wasn't until July 19th, 1865, that every man, regardless of skin color, was considered free. Honoring and acknowledging truth, facts, and history is how we build a better future.
Thank you, Ms. Pickett. Who would like to go next? Okay, Mr. Rider, thank you.
So I just want to wish everybody a happy and safe summer. One clarification, interim superintendent Longy mentioned the 2024 Summer Lunch Bunch Link Program. They're actually distributing food on Mondays and Wednesdays. I think he said Mondays and Fridays. So it's Mondays and Wednesdays between 8:00 a.m. and 12:00 p.m. at 96 Alden Ave, which is the old Enfield Food Shelf location, about one building over from where they are presently. I also wanted to thank the following schools. I was able to attend a list of Field Days and Moving Up ceremonies as we rounded out the school year, and I enjoyed the invitations, the hospitality, and the time spent with staff and students at Eli Whitney, Henry Barnard, Prudence Crandall. I also did Prudence Crandall's Moving Up Ceremony, JFK Basketball Students versus Faculty, Eagle Academy, Prudence Crandall's Moving Up Ceremony, and Enfield Street Schools Field Day. I had an amazing time at the EHS graduation. I was disappointed that it moved from Friday to Saturday, because I know people had made plans, but Saturday's weather was perfect. So I think that kind of made up, at least for me, doing it where there was spotty rain on Friday, but a perfect day on Saturday. And I also DJed Safe Grad at Sunny's for our students, and I want to wish all of our students in the class of 2024 an amazing future. It was a great group of kids to get to spend the night with on Friday night, and then to see them cross the stage on Saturday was great. So happy summer to everybody. Again, the first day of school, although we'll be meeting several times before that, is Thursday, August 29th, so I just want to put that in everybody's calendar. And thank you very much for inviting me to spend time at all of your Field Days. It was my pleasure to be there to help with the production of those events, and that's the reason why I'm here. So although it was quite a crazy two weeks to be in eight or nine different school events in a two-week span, that's my why. So I wanted to thank everybody for inviting me, and I had a great time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rider. Anybody else want to go? No? Okay. Well, then I guess I'll go. All right. So Phil kind of covered some of them, Amanda kind of covered some of them, so I'm just going to go briefly, because multiple news outlets have reached out, and I saw that there was news on, I think, Fox 61 this morning, to clear up their subpar reporting, basically. The money that the town additionally allocated for us is for the current shortfall. It has no application to next year. It doesn't bring back jobs for next year. It's simply to cover the shortfall for this year. So I just wanted to clear that up. Next year's cuts are still next year's cuts. The MOU, we received it via email on Monday, yesterday. It didn't come signed, but basically, so everybody here is clear, because what we agreed to, well, what we sent to them is basically what's in here, but just worded a little differently. So just to put it all out there, they were going to, they agreed to pay 3.9 million. And then the 1.7, we will pay back to them, starting a five-year repayment plan on July 1st, 2025. The bills to be paid with the 3.9 are in the attached exhibits, which is basically the insurance and IT. Then all the bills that are 1.7, those are going to be in Exhibit B. And then they've requested that we have a forensic audit by an auditor selected by the town for the fiscal year that commenced July 1st, '22, and ended June 30th, '23, and for the budget that commenced July 1st, '23, and ends June 30th, '24. And this audit shall be at the town's expense. Condition number two is we'll provide a detailed line item budget for budget submissions in future fiscal years in the format set forth in attached Exhibit C, which is basically the exhibits that we sent that kind of mirrors Hartford Public Schools and how they put their budget line items together. So there's no confusion of what we will provide or what we won't. And then the board will provide the council with quarterly financial reports. The first week of school every school year, halfway through the first semester of each school year, the first week of the second semester in each school year, and halfway through the second semester of each school year. Those reports shall be in the form of a year-to-date summary in the format in Exhibit D, which is the format that we sent them. What was that one long sheet page? So basically, if nobody has any qualms, if five or more people have any qualms about it, I'm just going to sign this and send it back to them so we can be done with our portion. And if they don't sign it, then they don't sign it, but our side will be done, and we'll fulfill everything that's on here. And then I wanted to congratulate the class of 2024. Best of luck to all of you. I was honored to give the diplomas that night. With the help of Mr. Rider, we did a good tag team of giving those diplomas out. It was a wonderful evening, and those kids worked really hard. And I just wanted to extend a thank you to my fellow Board of Ed members and admin and staff who have also been working around the clock. It's been a very tough few months with many, many meetings, long nights and rough days and stuff online and all sorts of things. And I just wanted to thank you guys and recognize your dedication to Enfield Public Schools, especially just simply elected unpaid volunteers that you are. So I know it's been rough, but I just wanted to thank you for putting the time in. And again, I wanted to just give my sincerest condolences, hugs, and prayers to the Zalecki family during their time of loss. That's it. You all have to go?
Okay.
Okay, Kathy first. There's not much one can say to, in a situation like this, but be strong and know you've got a lot of people that love you. The Town Council, I would like to thank them for what they did, bailing us out and knowing that it has gotten us precariously close to the fund balance being put in danger. But they did what they thought was best for the town, and we'll have to go with that. As far as getting public information out, I hope that as more and more information has come out to the public, that more and more people understand the dilemma that both we and the Town Council were in. It was a no-win situation either way that it went. As far as closing schools 10 years ago, there was a good reason for it. It wasn't a rushed decision. It was a hard decision, and it was because of dwindling numbers. The facts, the numbers were just there. You had to close some of the schools. And then the last thing, the traffic at Enfield High School, which keeps being brought up. Last week or the week before, I had the pleasure of driving down Mountain Road in Suffield. And before you get to the middle school and the big elementary school, all the way up to Spalding School, it probably took a good 20 minutes. The traffic made Enfield High look like a parking lot. It was incredible. And other than that, that's it for today. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Blank.
First, I'd like to start out, congratulations to all the graduates, whether you're going to college, going into the trades, going into the armed forces, or going into the workforce, or even taking a gap year to figure things out. No path is the wrong path. It is your path to create, and it will have curbs and bumps, and that's okay. Chairwoman Riley, I got a message during graduation that the Dave Matthews Band should be quoted at every graduation. I figured interim superintendent Longy would like that as well. I want to give my sincere sympathies to the Zalecki family on their loss. Also, my heartfelt sympathies and prayers to the family of Stacy, Dinah, Isquero, an EPS staff member who tragically passed away. My thoughts and prayers are with all of you. Thank you to Danielle Gerard to come out and talk about Rock the Vote. That's when, the '90s, where I was able to vote, and I loved Rock the Vote, and I loved MTV. Mr. Reno, thank you for coming and speaking about the budget and getting involved in the budget process. The state pieces of it are very confusing, and I definitely think that we have to hold the state more accountable in some of their communications that they give us. Ms. Griffin, thank you again for wanting to learn the budget process and also shedding light on what it takes to get a child an IEP or a 504 in our system. As Ms. Pickett said, regarding Juneteenth, more than 250,000 African Americans embraced freedom by executive decree in what became known as Juneteenth or Freedom Day. With the principles of self-determination, citizenship, and democracy magnifying their hopes and dreams, those Texans held fast to the promise of true liberty for all. I do have a question through the chair to the interim superintendent regarding summer school. How do parents find out what summer session the student gets for summer school? Or should this parent or student go to the school on Friday to look at the list?
That's, I'm assuming you mean the high school?
Yes.
That should be coming directly from the high school.
To the house?
It should be.
Okay. Or an email or something like that?
If it's not happening, just email me tomorrow. Make sure it's done.
Okay. A couple of things I want to talk about in the spirit of transparency is our insurance process. So I've talked to Chairwoman Riley about it. Years ago, our claim fund balance to pay employee claims got depleted, I think it was 2015, 2016. And at the time, we had Mayor Copan. He was in charge, and so he put us together and said, like, how can we fix this? What happened? So collaboratively, we worked together. But I did, if I misquote this, you can correct me, Chairwoman Riley or interim superintendent Longy, when we were first told to prepare our budget, we were told by the town that we had to budget 9% for insurance. Is that correct?
I don't know how far back that goes. I'm just learning the past month or two, but it was changed within the past three months for next year to 11 and 1/2.
To 11 and 1/2.
On this year's budget, we were 9 and 1/2%, they told us.
Okay. So I guess my question is on that, and it's probably a process perhaps Mr. Coburn would like to get more involved in as well, is when they are making those insurance increases, are we getting some sort of report? Are we getting the actuary report? Are we getting the claim study to see why they are increasing it? Also, we would need a full accounting of the claim fund balance, because based on the number of employees, there's supposed to be a certain percentage of reserves in that claim fund balance. And what's happened over the years is we've had to replenish that claim fund balance, which has been premiums that employees had to pay and were embedded in your medical costs. And some of the employees are complaining about how expensive their medical costs were. And I know that although having the Board of Ed on the state, on the insurance with the town saves money, maybe it would behoove us to look into one of those state plans that have come out and maybe do something that was more cost-effective to our employees who are on our insurance. So Counselor Ludwig, myself, and Chairwoman Riley worked on that committee. It was a great committee. So perhaps we can get another meeting or start those meetings up again, because I'm just really concerned about the increases and then how we report the increases to Lorena at the Finance Director. So I also kind of want to go back to the 2.5 million deposited into the Board of Ed account. As we had learned, the Board of Ed has zero access to the cash accounts. We are at, the town will tell us when we get cash, and so at that point, that's when we know. But if that, if our account was used and it was the wrong account, are there other accounts that money was deposited in error? And as we're looking at a forensic audit, I might be prudent at the same time for the town to do a forensic audit, because it was their staff member who told us that the 2.5 million dollars came into our account and it was ours. And then it changed. So I'd like a little bit more information on that. And I think, Mr. Coburn, I don't know if you remember, in the Finance Committee, we were talking, there definitely needs to be more of a bridge between our Finance Department and the Town Finance Department, and we were perhaps talking about quarterly meetings and different things like that. Okay. So lastly, I would like to thank the many people in the Enfield community who reached out to me with their support following the joint Town Council and Board of Ed meeting on that Thursday, June 13th, and after the Monday Town Council meeting. Your kind words of support and trust mean so much. Between the cards, the flowers, the Facebook messages, and the many stops, whether it was at ShopRite, Dunkin', or Costco, all the places I am frequently, it really shows that people do not believe the lies and misinformation spread about me. I have given a lot of myself to this community, and so did my father. My family and friends continue to remind me just whose daughter I am. My fellow elected officials, thank you, who have messaged supporting me from both sides of the aisle. Thank you both to the EDTC and the ERTC members who reached out to me and offered their support. Thank you to the people who advised me to contact the attorney for defamation and slander. You see, Enfield, EPS, we are EPS. I can sleep well at night. I served to the best of my abilities these last 13 years with honesty and integrity. Nobody can ever take that away. EPS, remember how I told you they can't take your spirit? Well, they can't take mine either. In the words of Tom Petty, "I will stand my ground. I won't back down. I know it's right. I got just one life. In a world that keeps on pushing me around, I'll stand my ground, and I won't back down." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blank. Go ahead, Amanda.
I just wanted to ask a couple clarifying statements about the MOU. I'm totally okay if you sign it. I'm totally okay if you sign it. I do just want to say publicly, I think the 1.7 repayment piece as a taxpayer is just a little bit silly, but if that's what the town really wants, the money just to be shuffled back and forth and as a budget line item, that like we're just paying each other, seems very awkward, but that's fine. I'm going to agree with Tina's comments. It sounds like they want two years of a forensic audit.
Yes.
I would agree that we should also get a town audit. I'd also be interested in the additional cost of that because I'm, through my understanding, our audit already is done and it is a forensic audit. So that is wasted to me, dollars being spent on something. And then I just do want to clarify, I agree with the budget presentation template. I know Hartford's used an example, but I also think that's a great illustration that a good budget presentation doesn't mean that you're going to have the funds to meet your needs. We all know what happened with Hartford, so I think that's just an illustration that like, a format of a budget doesn't necessarily mean that the budget's going to work and be done well. So thank you for leading that charlet. I know it's been a really tough battle, so I support moving ahead.
Okay. Awesome. Anybody else?
I think, I just want to correct Mr. Longy. I forgot to correct Mr. Longy. The lunch link is Monday and Wednesdays, not Mondays and Fridays. Okay, I just wanted to correct him. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
We all just want to correct you.
I just want to, for the record, I want to correct you twice.
Tina, senior moments.
Okay. All right. So I've got, I've got action items to follow up with, three of them so far, four now. So we will work on that in the next leadership. Okay, so we're going to move on. Everybody else good? All right. We're going to move on to unfinished business, policy revision, second reading, policy 6148. Ms. Cushman.
Policy 6148 is a state mandated policy that aligns our district with current legislation. It states that no local or regional board of education shall permit any student to graduate from high school or grant a diploma to any student unless such student has completed a free application for federal student aid, an application for institutional financial aid for students without legal immigration status, or there is a need to complete a waiver. I would like to make a motion to approve the first reading of policy 6148, the FAFSA completion program.
All right. Motion made by Ms. Cushman.
I'll make the motion just to clarify, this is the second reading of that policy.
I move for a second reading of the policy.
Motion made by Ms. Pickett for the second reading. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Coburn. Okay, discussion.
I'll chime in.
Go ahead.
So I know we had a hearty discussion on this policy, the last reading, so I'm not going to rehammer the wheel on that. I know we have some opinions on this and we, you know, we kind of indicated this may be an example of state overreach into what was historically a local issue. We did talk about the, some of the challenges where now students not intending to go to school are also burdened with having to complete the FAFSA or seek a waiver, which will now burden staff that needs to file and approve and sign all these waivers. Interestingly enough, I did, you know, I'm signed up for miscellaneous newsletters and stuff like that and I received an article just yesterday or today from the Education Trust Organization and it actually talks about struggles with FAFSA. And it gives an example of students and residents having trouble completing the FAFSA because one of the requirements, when you go in and complete it electronically, is you need the student social security number and that of the parents and guardians. And this ends up posing a undue burden, especially on mixed-status families where family members may not have a social security number to use. Therefore, the FAFSA ends up going through this manual process and then it just essentially spins in cyberspace. So the article talks about, you know, the struggles, FAFSA's working on improving this, but it poses significant challenges to students, particularly from diverse backgrounds and especially first-generation students and people applying this for the first time. So I just, again, want to put that out there, that this is a policy that is being forced upon us to comply with state law, but I think many of us are not in agreement with the spirit of this policy.
Thank you, Mr. Coburn. Anybody else? Go ahead, Mr. Ryder.
I just wanted to make sure that you guys saw that email that Phil had sent to us to, okay.
Any other discussion?
No, I just wanted to thank Mr. Coburn, we did share that.
Yes.
I believe that this policy is something that we have to add to the books and I would also say that this is something that either the Policy Committee or through interim superintendent Longy reach out to the State Department of Education for clarification on because I know that this is something that we have to add to our books, but at the same time, if this is going to cause undue hardship, it needs to be edited in some way, shape, or form.
Yeah.
But I do understand, I do understand the school districts, the importance of it. It needs to get added, but I don't think it should be added if it's going to cause issues.
Yeah. Maybe this, maybe the Policy Committee can reach back out to Cave and see if they've had pushback from other communities on it. Okay. Anybody else? All right. Then roll call, please.
Okay. Vote on second reading of policy 6148. Dr. Kelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
No.
Mr. Coburn?
No.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Okay. All right, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules relating to the order of business and move Agenda items 11E and 11F into Agenda Item 17, moving these items after executive session so the board can enter executive session and discuss matters relating to personnel.
Okay. We can move, so I have a motion to move E and F to after number 17.
So moved.
That's the old one. Yep. So motion made by?
Me. Oh, Phil seconded, I seconded it, sorry.
Come on. These not here guys.
I feel very lost without Kathy, not going to lie.
Okay. Any discussion on that? All right. So sensing none, show of hands, all those in favor. None in favor, none against. Thank you. Okay. All right. So approval of teacher and administrator evaluation plan. Ms. Brown and Mr.?
I got it. Sorry. Thank you for being patient with me. I'm doing three rolls here. Tonight, we welcome Sarah Brown, JFK Assistant Principal, and Gray Wanzer, Enfield High School History Teacher, as well as co-chairs of the Teacher and Administrative Evaluation Committee. They are here to discuss the new teacher administrative evaluation plans and are looking for board approval to submit this plan to the State Department of Education. Therefore, the Enfield Board of Education may take any actions deemed appropriate regarding approval of the teacher and administrator evaluation plan to the state. And Gray and Sarah, thank you so much for coming so late in the school, well, school year's over. Thanks for coming after the school year's over. Thank you for being patient with us and we turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you for having us tonight. Before we start, I just want to personally thank Gray. I was on medical leave for a good portion of the school year and he took the lead with a lot of our meetings and really facilitated a lot of the professional development that went into creating the manual that we're going to be presenting to you. So I just wanted to publicly say thank you, Gray. He's been a really great person to work with through the years. I think we've been working together for probably almost 10. And if you look at the list of educators that are on the screen right now, again, they are also people who have been on our committee for years, from the start of our old manual that we've come and talked to you about before to this new manual. So I, I know Gray feels the same. We want to thank everyone for all of their hard work. What's really nice about our committee is that we have members from different levels, whether they're on the teacher's side or the administrator's side. We make sure that we have classroom teachers to specialists, so that way we really are making sure that we're looking at this manual from all lenses to make sure that we create the best manual for our educators here in Enfield.
All right. So why are we here tonight in front of you? What's the purpose for us being here? In short, state law and politics, but basically, in, a number of years ago, the state legislature passed some sweeping education reforms and they implemented a new teacher evaluation program. And the design of this program was intended to create a system that had a summative rating. So basically, you take the multifaceted, complex nature of what educators do and you boil it down to a number between 1 and 4. And if you got a 1 or a 2, you were in the bad zone and you had to improve or you had to get out. And the thought was that this would eliminate less-than-stellar teachers and, you know, increase student achievement. So what we had to do in the 2013-14 school year was develop the evaluation model based upon that sort of premise and then put it into practice. So that was done. And over 10 years, the state and everybody under this evaluation model had time to look at it and what did we discover in terms of teacher score and student achievement? We found out that over 90% of teachers rank on a 3, which is proficient, and another 5 to 6 rank as a 4, which is exemplary. And the people that were in the 1 and 2 were people that kind of naturally exited the profession anyway. But the telling piece was the student achievement. There was zero increase to student achievement under the evaluation model we've lived under for the last decade. Zero. It's remained stagnant. So it did not do what it intended to do. So in the fall of 2022, the Connecticut State Department of Education, they created, they asked this EES group to examine the format and the sort of makeup and the standards of the state laws. And it was a collective group, people representing your interests as a Board of Ed, people representing teacher interests, people representing administrative interests, and they worked together to develop new standards. So what they've allowed us to do as local districts is that we have to develop a new model under completely different guidelines, guidelines that go away from what was essentially the punitive nature of the old evaluation model into something that's much more open-ended, focused, we'll get to the differences in focus here soon enough. But the hope is that it'll lead to more risk-taking for educators in terms of doing things that they think will be meaningful to their students, depending on what setting they're in, and actually try to help achievement. So that's, that's why we're here.
So now, the purpose of educator evaluation in Enfield, the, when the committee came together, we really wanted to create a manual that was based on those state requirements and recommendations and really have a comprehensive evaluation manual for our educators here in Enfield. So there are going to be more opportunities within this manual for collaboration, collaboration with colleagues, feedback from evaluation, evaluator, and self-reflection. The data that we'll gain from this new evaluation system will be really important for the committee as we will give our input for professional development, not that we're deciding, but we'll be able to really help lend in that process of professional development. So that way, when we do see those areas of weaknesses, we can help our educators grow.
And that's actually one area that we noticed as a committee. We are supposed to, as a committee, inform the professional development opportunities that exist in Enfield and there's really not a connectivity right now, so we're working on that process to help us as we move forward. All right. So the fundamental shifts in, in the new program. So there's more open-ended and focused feedback between an educator and evaluator and there's no more summative score. Because what we found in just open discussions is that when you know you're going to be scored and you have to reach a certain score, you're not really going to take any risks. You're going to do what's safe, you're going to do what you know you can achieve, and who does that honestly really help? So we're removing the summative score and if there's any concerns about that, we can, I'm sure we can address that. We're going to focus on, instead of student achievement, like the old system, the focus is now teacher practice and the impact that that has on student. And it's not necessarily relegated to, you know, achieve just strictly like state tests or standardized tests. You can focus more on like a whole child standard. So if you wanted to focus in on social, emotional learning, if you wanted to do academic achievement, if you wanted to do teacher practice and how that enhances, you know, for example, I'd like to work on better routines and transitions between activities to keep more focus in class. That's the type of thing, so you can really drill down into the art and science that is teaching. Let's see. We are increasing and defining supports available, so educators and service providers have them. Under the old system, if you were on an assistance plan, that was like a bad thing. Now we've built in tiered support systems that all teachers can access, not because they're not doing a good job, it's just, you know, hey, you did great at creating this discussion, you know, who also does that? This teacher down the hall. Let's, let's see if we can get you some coverage so you can go see how that teacher does it. It's, it's that sort of model that we're looking at. Again, it tries to encourage risk-taking and innovation that will positively impact the students. So there's, it's not like we're abandoning what students need or what's going to impact them. In fact, we're just refocusing how we do that. So it's teacher practice and how specifically does that impact students in a positive way. And then we're going to also, one of the other things that this EES group found in our current model is that we do a ton of evidence collection that isn't necessarily time-efficient or useful. So if you need to prove and bring in artifacts, for example, that you follow district procedures, we have teachers taking pictures of their fire drill procedures, printing it out in color, which costs money, and then bringing that in this big binder of evidence when, you know, we can probably capture that, that evidence in a much different way or much more meaningful way. So anyway, those are some of the big shifts. And I'm sorry, we never asked, if you, any of you have questions, do you want to ask as they come up or do you want to just save it for the end? I apologize, we didn't.
Yeah, we'll just wait till the end.
Okay.
That's how we usually do it. Thank you, though.
You're doing great.
So before, in the, in the old manual, there were a lot of different components. There was a section for parent goals, student goals, there was a professional goal, we had student learning objectives, and then the observation piece. So it was very cumbersome for the evaluator and for the person who was being evaluated. So this is really nice because it's now just two components of the evaluation. We have high-leverage goals and then we have the observation piece of professional practice. So they don't have to be together and correlate with one another. They can be separate or you can have them kind of complement each other. So for example, an educator's goal may be focused on planning, which is our domain 2, but an evaluator may observe and provide feedback on the learning environment, domain 1, and planning, domain 2, during an observation. So it really gives flexibility for both sides when you're working on that evaluation manual for them.
And we'll get into more specifics in a moment about those two components. So to that point, high-leverage goals, this is a new term for us. We honestly, we met as a committee six times and this is one area that we really had trouble with because the state told us we, we needed to revise our plan, but they didn't end up providing us guidance as to what exactly that looks like until February. So we were kind of operating blindly for a while there. So we, you know, we eventually got what those things looked like, but again, a high-leverage goal focuses on teacher practice and the impact of that goal on student and teacher practice. So it's, it's a lot more reflective in terms of pointed, specific practice of teaching. It focuses on a specific aspect of a whole student approach, so that could include social, emotional, academic achievement, pedagogy, you know, the how and why of teaching. They're based on the process, again, a process of reflection of your process as an educator and they're supported by at least what we call two measures of success. We used to call that evidence, but that is something that is collaboratively discussed and agreed upon between an educator and an evaluator. And again, the goal is designed to create innovation and take some risk to see if you can, you know, go a little bit further than you thought you could. Again, it's really taking away from identifying a safe goal that you know you can to trying something that you're not maybe sure you can achieve, but why not try it anyway? So.
Some positive aspects about the high-leverage goals. Some positive aspects about the high-leverage goals. You can structure your goal now either as a one-year goal, a two-year goal, or a three-year goal. That really is going to promote that risk-taking. And another thing that we've noticed is teachers may have had a goal in the past, they really liked what they were doing, but the year ended, and then they have to start over with something fresh. So this actually will give them more continuity from one year to another. As Gray has said, it really does promote risk-taking. I think that has been a fear of teachers is that everything was correlated to this final score that we get at the end, and we really want people to be authentic and try new things without having that fear of maybe having a poor score. So, you know, I think this would be really nice that we can have educators try their, what they've always wondered what they could do in the classroom and, without having a penalty towards it. If they, if an educator is not able to reach their goal, it's not like that they're failing at it, it's just that they may need that tiered help. So we kind of framed it kind of like how we have it for our students, where you have a tier one, tier two, tier three. I think that'll be easier for everyone to kind of grasp, that tier one is for everyone, tier two, if you need a little bit more assistance, and then tier three is for those who, you know, are having difficulty in, in an area. So the high-leverage goals really are going to, I think, give us some freedom to our educators to really try new things within the classroom.
All right, so we have a couple of examples here, with or without a measure of success. And eventually, you know, these are just samples that we were writing up so that when teachers come in next year, we have to give them PD as to what this new evaluation system looks like, they're going to want to see examples. So as we develop this process without a lot of guidance from the state, we, we just decided to throw a few different examples up there. But as you could see, you know, a high-leverage goal, so the first one's about having more student autonomy in classes, and that person is deciding to use an academic measure as, as their measure of success. The other goal that you see up there on the screen is, is just a statement of a goal, but the educator and the evaluator would have to figure out what they're going to use for evidence in, in that particular goal. So that one's more elementary school-based, morning meetings and effective routines and transitions. So that's, that's what they look like, and yeah.
So we're going to also be able to keep the, the three meetings every year that we've already had in our previous models, so the beginning of the year meeting, mid-year, and end of the year. And this will allow for that discussion, that dialogue, feedback, and if, you know, a teacher says, I really need to observe, you know, someone with transitions or classroom management, it is at those times that then the evaluator would find those opportunities for that educator to be able to observe and maybe gain some other strategies for themselves in their own classroom. If we have a teacher who is still in the team process, they can actually use that work as their goal, so that way they're not doing, I guess, double duty, if you will, with the work for team and then the work for their evaluation plan. So I think it'll be really nice that we still have something that is similar to what they, teachers have already known about for the last few years, having that checkpoints throughout the year, with the beginning of the year, mid-year, and end of the year meetings.
Okay, so the other piece, so the first one is high-leverage goals, and the last thing I just want to say on that, before we move into the second piece, the final piece, is in terms of what Sarah said earlier, you can set a very ambitious goal, you can work towards it, you cannot achieve it. That doesn't mean that you fail. Now, how do you determine, like, so you can never fail? Nope, that's not the case either. If you are trying to achieve, you are reflecting upon your practice, you are attempting to meet that goal, we view that as, as being pretty successful because you're pushing yourself. On the other hand, if you say, well, this is my goal, and then you're asked, well, what did you do to pursue that goal? Nothing. What did you do to reflect upon that goal? Nothing. Then that's, that's a situation where it's, we're not going to call it a fail, but we're going to say, well, then obviously you're going to need some tiered support, and that's where things be, you know, become much more scrutinized. So it's not like it's just an open-ended free-for-all with the goals, there, there has to be some progress towards them, or at the very least, a true and consistent attempt to achieve them and reflect upon, maybe, you know, there's, there's some interesting stuff and reflecting upon why you didn't achieve your goal. We don't always succeed every time we set out, so that's, that's kind of the, the philosophy we want to instill with this new model. So the other piece, observational professional practice. Observations occur throughout the continuous learning process, and we're going to talk about how we've sort of divvied up the staff into different cohort groups and how they have sort of different numbers attached to the observations. And the identified high-leverage goals provide, can provide a specific teaching area. Again, that's where your goal and your observation practice can be interlinked, or they can kind of operate separately from one another.
This was another area that we talked about for quite a while, of how we were going to break down the, the groups. And we finally came down to three different cohorts. The first is those teachers in years one through four. The second is years five through eight and who have completed cohort one in Enfield. And then cohort three is any educator with nine or more years in the district and have completed cohort two within the district.
In terms of the, the rubrics, we went from many, many, many rubrics, and we boiled it down to two. And the rubrics themselves, they were matrices that had these sliding scales, one through four, and it was, you know, a rather cumbersome task for both teacher and evaluator. And one of the standards set by this EES group was they wanted to remove a lot of the excessive paperwork that was associated with the older model. So you can see up here on screen, we've broken it down, all teachers are going to fall into one of two groups. Your classroom educators, so that would be people like myself, I'm a high school social studies teacher, and then service providers, those would be people like guidance counselors, social workers, people that work more in a smaller group setting or an individual setting to assist students. And those are the different domains. They're, they're, essentially what we did was we took the best parts of our old model and system, and we incorporated it into the domains. We, we spent a lot of time discussing the language of the indicators in the domain because we haven't really looked at it or edited it heavily in the last decade, so things have changed quite a bit in the last just four years in education, so we wanted to make sure the indicators reflected that.
And the purpose of the rubric is really to start, have a starting point or a foundation for those conversations that are going to happen throughout the year, and really making sure that the feedback is, is specific for those teachers, so that way, or I should say educators, so that they have those strengths that they are, you know, already have accomplished, but also know what their areas of weaknesses are going to be for improvement.
The tiered support plan, so again, this is going to be a big mental shift for, for all the teachers and evaluators, because a support plan in the old model was like a big no-no, you don't want to go there, you don't want to be in that position. Under this, it's, it's a little bit more different, it's a little bit more different, it's, it's much different. So basically, support plans and corrective support plans, the first tier, and I believe the documents were sent to everybody, we turned them in, so maybe had a chance to look at the actual manual itself. But the first tier of support is, is available to any educator, that's things like professional development opportunities, a conference, observing a co-teacher, you know, or another teacher teach, you know, even being given time to read, you know, some document related to teaching and learning. But that's going to be a big shift that all teachers will need to make in this new model, that if you're in tier one, that's not a bad thing, that's just, it's just a way to give you a different perspective on, on, you know, something that you're doing well and how to improve upon it. Then at that point, when we get into tier two, tier three, and then the corrective action plan, we're talking about, you know, I mean, the reason, one of the reasons that we've created the three cohorts is your first, your teachers in their first four years are the teachers that need the most support. And, and so generally, you will see teachers struggle in their first four or five years with classroom management, that's a natural thing, managing a class, those are skills that just take time to develop that most people don't come with. So like a tier two support, that would be for, there's some concerns, there's some assistance we want to give to address some smaller area things, some things that may be natural in your progression as an educator, but that's for supports to, specific, measured supports that have a timeline, and teachers given feedback reflects themselves, and either they continue the supports or they kind of, you know, graduate out of that tier. Third level is for teachers that have more persistent concerns that, you know, don't seem to necessarily be improving with the suggestions and reflections given, and if there's resistance to that reflection, if there's resistance to that help, then there can be another level where it's the corrective support plan, and it's essentially, if, if you don't do the things in that plan, then the district is probably going to look to not renew your contract because it's been, over a length of time, it's been repeated, it's been almost like a refusal to accept any assistance, feedback, or growth. So again, anybody that's concerned that this new philosophical shift might just, it's kind of do whatever you want, no, nobody on the committee wants teachers that are resistant to change and getting better to, to stay. We want teachers to continually grow because that's kind of the job, you know? You never perfect it, you just keep getting better at it.
So as we had said, we spent a lot of time on the educator evaluation manual, and we did not have enough time to develop the administrator evaluation manual. So for this coming year, our recommendation is to adopt the state model, but we would like to make it more fitting for Enfield. So next year, we're going to view it as a pilot year and then gather any feedback from administrators or other staff members and make any needed adjustments at that time. And if you have any questions, we will take them now.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Janis.
I like the part about trying to keep the risk-takers, or getting teachers to make risk-takers since, I was a pretty big risk-taker myself. Who is going to be the person who oversees or directs this process?
In terms of the, the entire system or school building or?
Evaluation.
So to be honest, we, we kind of have to wait, see where the dust settles with all of the movement. We've lost a significant amount of teachers, we also lost a significant amount of evaluators. So we have to sit down over the summer with Andy and figure out who exactly in his reconfigured staff at central office is going to oversee this, which administrators will be evaluators, what the breakdown of the numbers are going to be, how, how the system works. But overall, it's, it's a superintendent, to answer your question just plainly, it's a superintendent or is designate that will oversee it. But we honestly just, we've been dealing with the events of the last month, and we haven't had a chance to sit down and have those thorough discussions about exactly what it'll look like next year.
Before I go any farther, having seen a lot of these things, you know, from the state saying this is what the law is going to be, now each district, you make up your thinking, I mean, this is the best one I've ever seen, really. You guys did a nice job.
I think the feedback from both teachers and administrators on the committee was, they, they really liked, again, we spent the entire time, out of all of six of our meetings, dealing with the teacher manual, but both, they said were, everybody was across the board consensus was, they're far better than, than what currently exists.
They were, for sure. So as far as overseeing the whole thing, you're saying it's from the superintendent and down?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, is there going to be like, when we get to the down part, like a, a group of, of teachers and administrators who are involved in this whole thing? Or who, who directly goes back and forth with the teachers?
So, so the committee that, that we are co-chairs of, there's a dispute, we didn't cover it in the presentation, but there's, like, if you have a dispute between, you know, your teacher and you disagree with your evaluator, there's a dispute resolution process, and either they have two options, they can either put in writing the, the issue, well, the first thing is they have to sit down in a room and try to figure it out. If that's not possible, then the two options that they have are to either go to the super, do in writing to the superintendent for a decision, or they can bring it forward to a collective group of the committee, a subgroup of our committee, both teacher and administrator representation, and they will render a decision. So in terms of like disputes that come up, but is that not your, is your question more about organization?
No, you, you're hitting the right spots, but who, is it the school administrator who's going to do the final write-up?
So it's whoever you're, so we used to, you know, we had the coordinators, and one of the reasons the coordinators were brought on was because of the state law change in 2014, and the idea was you have a content-specific area, like for me at the high school, you have a content-specific area. Now those coordinators are gone, you have directors, so I'm imagining the directors are going to have a lot to do with, with evaluations, but we just haven't sat down to know because, you know, my former coordinator is now a director, but he's not just got social studies, he's got world language and libraries too to cover. So is that possible for one person to cover three or four departments? And what role are vice principals and assistant principals going to have in that evaluation process? That's where we have to sit down, and we have to first get our numbers. How many teachers do we actually have? How many administrators do we actually have? And what's reasonable? Because the evaluation model we created was based upon what we had. We don't really know how that's going to filter yet to what we're looking at next year.
Did you consider at all, because I'll use social studies as an example, we're both social studies teachers. If someone is having difficulty, or anybody, they're just getting ready to write their own evaluation, like a subcommittee within your own department, say three people, if somebody's having problems, then those three people, the person who's going to write the evaluation, and that teacher could sit there and go over things?
So, so they're, they're not within, there's not a model like that, but if there's an assistance program that needs to happen, once you go beyond level one, which is open to everybody, you get into level two, three, or the corrective, it's required by state law that, that the teacher has to have a representative there from their association, and also other, the superintendent can ask additional evaluators to join in on the process. So if, you know, let's say that there's some sort of personality conflict that exists between an educator and evaluator team, they could bring in, and the evaluator thinks they have to be on support, and there's some, maybe some skepticism there, an additional evaluator could be brought in, and by law, the association representative has to be there as well.
It's the disagreement part that I'm most concerned about, because you know what happens quite, or at least it used to quite often.
I can say, though, for assistance plans that I've written in the past, it has been collaborative, where you have other people within the department that are going to work, like, almost like as a mentor to that individual, check-ins with other people within the school, so it's not just that person, their evaluator, sitting down in a room, it's, it, trying to get as many people as possible to help that person out to be able to grow, and because it can't just be those two people, it needs, you need others.
Exactly.
So I know in the past, that's how our assistant plans have been written, and we kept a lot of that language from our old manual for this new manual, so I would assume that that's the practice we would continue doing because it worked in the last manual.
Yeah, and I'll just add to that, that we kept, like Sarah's saying, we kept, we had some really strong language in our former manual about both dispute resolutions and appeals. So it's weird because under the old system for appeals, you could appeal your final score, but with this system, there's no final score, but if you want to appeal the write-up that you got, there's still that process, and it's a rather litigious one to go through. We've only done it once, I don't think anybody wants to do it again, but it's there if we need to, so.
So there is a process too, if a teacher, and I'm going to say the younger teachers, because you learn a heck of a lot the first six or seven years. because you learn a heck of a lot the first six or seven years, what to do and what not to do. But is there a process where somebody in this whole new system can say to a teacher, I want you to go to so-and-so's class and, you know, observe and then go to somebody else's class?
Yeah.
And that would be help, I think that's probably the biggest thing that you can do to help them.
That's, that's our tier one support, what we call our tier one, yeah, those are available to anybody at any time.
And you also have to realize those teachers who are in their first few years, they're also working on team in that module. So there's I believe five modules that they have to go through from instruction, planning, classroom management. So they're, they already have another layer of support on top of our manual as well.
Okay. Who determines the goals?
The teachers do through a process of reflection, they have their draft of their goal and then they bring it to their beginning of the year meeting and they're themselves and their evaluator will work on that to agree to the goal and then to agree to the evidence or measures of success for that goal. Like, all right, how will we know if you achieve this goal or not? So that'll be a collaborative discussion.
I would hope that, like when it comes to senior teachers, because most of us who do it for our whole career are looking at 35 to 38 years or more, that there is some realization, if you have teachers who are good in the classroom, they're good with the kids, they're just good all around, that the expectations of some of, you know, the new goals that they're going to have can't be, it's like, you're doing a good job, just keep doing what you're doing and come up with some sort of goal, that's not a major thing.
I think that the way that this is written up will allow for more sort of creative and professional freedom for a teacher in the situation like you're describing to, you know, maybe they get bored or their goal is stale and they want to try something new. There's a lot of supports in the system to do that.
Well, I really hope that this whole thing about having kid, uh, kids, that's what I keep calling teachers, having the teachers take the risks, try things new, if it works fine, if it doesn't, then you don't do it anymore. That seems like that's built in here. Okay, nice job, guys.
It's about reflection, yeah. So you try something, if it works, great, you keep doing it, make it better, if it doesn't, go back to the drawing board, yeah.
Thank you, you guys did a nice job.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to go Ms. Saicry and then I'll go over here and over there.
Yeah, the teacher.
Saicry.
Well, you sort of asked the question I was going to ask about the teachers setting the goals. Is this like every year, every two years, or it depends, like how does Enfield do it?
So, so a teacher that's in the first cohort group, a non-tenured teacher, they can, they have so much on their plate that we're going to relegate them to one-year goal. But when you're beyond that, you've graduated from that cohort, you can have a one, two or a three-year goal. So like myself, for example, I'm teaching a UConn ECE course next year for the first time. I'm thinking right now, I'm going to probably do a two-year goal based on planning and pedagogy in that class, you know, I have an idea in my head how those lessons and topics are going to go. But until I do it for the first time with a group of students live, I'm not really going to know. And then that second year, I can really make it better and by that third year, perfect it. That's, that's what I'm thinking as a goal. But you can have a one-year goal, you can change it up, it can be about anything in the domain. I mean, an example goal that we were given by somebody who helped us out quite a bit was a teacher who wants to explore the impact of AI in the classroom. Know what that looks like, it might, that's going to be totally different from an English high school teacher as opposed to a second grade specialist. But there might be some validity in, in exploring that goal and looking at things that might be helpful or what, maybe the opposite, the pitfalls of AI, things like that.
Now, can the evaluator, can they suggest goals for the teachers too?
They can, but everything has to be mutually agreed upon, so it, you can't have an evaluator say you have to do this because that takes away from that teacher being able to have any risk-taking or ownership of what they're going to be doing in the classroom. You can also have some collaborative goals. So if you have, if you're a regular ed teacher and you co-teach with a special ed teacher, if you want to work together, it just, it really lends itself to people just working together, sharing best practices and again, taking risks, which I feel like in the last 10 years, we really haven't had the opportunity to do.
And the other thing to, to that question that I would add in is I think with the adoption of the new administrator evaluation model, the whole, the basis of that whole document is about supporting teacher reflection, supporting teacher professional development, supporting just general teacher development. So it's not nearly as, it doesn't dictate nearly as much for an evaluator in terms of taking control of the goal, goal-setting process. It's really about being collaborative and working together to develop that.
Last question, I'm just curious, now who does, when you say an evaluator, is that administration, like a principal, vice principal?
Anyone who has their O-92 certification, so it can be anyone from now a director, but a coordinator before, an assistant principal, principal, dean of students. So it really had a vast, I guess, applied to a vast amount of people.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Saicry. Ms. Pickett?
So I appreciate the spirit of continuous improvement. I thank you both and the committee for your efforts. I am, you don't have to answer this question tonight, and maybe this is actually a good, maybe fall consideration with all of the changes. I would be interested to know about the support structures for our staff. So you've mentioned a lot about tier one, tier two, tier three. But I think it'd be interesting to hear about the connection of that with our professional learning plans, with our structures of staff meetings, grade level meetings, department meetings, and where the support can be embedded. We're going to be having to work smarter, not harder. And so I think that's an important thing to consider. I do have a few questions. One is, what is the flexibility in adjusting your goal? So I love the idea of being creative, but the reality is sometimes you know very quickly, like this isn't working. So what can we do to adjust goals and what is that process like?
That goes back to that mid-year check-in where you would say, it's not working out and I need to make some adjustments. And as long as you have actual, and I don't want to say data-like numbers, but information to show that you've tried whatever goal you had within the classroom and it just didn't work out, and then what do you want to do differently? That's that reflection piece. So as long as you've got that part in your conversations during that mid-year meeting, you can make any adjustments, again, mutually agreed upon. You can't go, you know, completely in the wrong direction and have nothing to do with what you're doing within the classroom, but you definitely have that flexibility.
Thanks. The other thing that, just to clarify, you shared some examples of potential goals. I am a little interested, they weren't in a SMART type of format, so I think of like how we typically write goals in education. So is there a reason that we don't want to be more specific and potentially measurable? If I'm not wrong, I think I heard in your answer to Mr. Genitus that they are identifying, like you are identifying data and I understand the large concept of data, like yes, test scores and assessment data, but also like work examples, other things that we can use for data. But ensuring that we are kind of using information to monitor growth and look at impact. So can you just clarify, like that is part of?
So, I mean, yes, there are, there is going to be data tied to, on some people's goals, but we're not having that ending result, that summative score. So I think because we used to have that summative score, everything was in that SMART goal format, but now we don't have that ending score. So I think that's why you have that flexibility where it doesn't have to be so measurable.
It's really about impact, like that's so much I can, perfect. And then can I just get one last clarification? The rubric that we're using, is that a state rubric or is that an EPS-created rubric?
Yes. So it, it, it takes our language from our rubric, but it follows, the, the whole thing, I mean, that's one of the first tasks we really had to wrestle with was what the single-point competency rubric looks like. So that the, the format, the single-point competency rubric, where it's essentially one column in the middle of all the indicators, a column on the left for commendations, a column on the right for recommendations or corrective stuff, that is directly from the state suggested plan. We just populated those with our own language that we, that we took and revised and, you know, re-edited to make it more applicable to reflect what's going on today.
Thank you so much, appreciate your time and effort on this.
Mr. Kovar?
All right, I wanted to thank you guys for coming in. I know at the beginning, you had Benson State Law and I just want to highlight one of the policies that we recently passed that empowered you guys, which is policy 4115, educator, educator and leader evaluation and support program. So obviously we had recently discussed that and implemented that. So I know you had talked about the, the makeup of the committee and it seems like it was over a dozen people and it was very diverse. I just wanted to know if you went beyond that committee when you, you guys were meeting and formulating this, like did you guys conduct any focus groups or anything with other staff outside of that committee?
We, so beginning of the process, we got a sort of a vague, this is what you're supposed to do. We didn't have specific guidelines or like a model plan or what this actually looked like. So we read things like you have to develop high-leverage goals, but what does that look like, what does that mean? So first, the majority of our meetings, we didn't have that guidance. So we talked about several times, we debated heavily in the first meeting about doing a survey or about asking people, but we couldn't formulate questions that we felt would give us any tangible answers from the group. So instead, we kind of decided to not do a survey because we didn't know what we had to really do in a, in a, in a meaningful way. And we decided to just use the representative group, which, you know, hits upon every level, a lot of different perspectives. I recall a pretty spirited discussion over a two-week timeline difference for a mid-year meeting and very valid points. So I think, you know, the people in the room did their best to represent the entire school district, but we just weren't in a position to do a focus group thing or, or survey because we couldn't, we sat, we tried to develop questions, but we, they were far too ambiguous for us to be helpful to our process.
Okay, thank you. No, that's fair. And I know, I think when Vice Chair Genitus was talking about this, kind of addressed one of my other questions, but did you guys either discuss or encounter, or do you foresee any like collective bargaining implications from this? I know you talked about the dispute forum resolutions, was there more that was kind of incorporated into this as you established it?
I would initially, by all means, add in what you'd like. I don't, I don't anticipate more issues. What I do anticipate is there's going to be a lot of different teaming. Like me, for example, my old coordinator is now director, so if he's my evaluator, that'll be a constant thing that I'm used to, but I may not have him as an evaluator, may have somebody else. So that's a different perspective, a new relationship. So do I anticipate that going poorly? No. But might there be, like we haven't, we haven't had any requests for dispute resolution in at least the last five years. Might there be a few next year? There might be, but there's already an established, clear process in there to handle it. So in terms of any collective bargaining issues, no, I don't, I don't see that being the case.
I also wanted to add, we've, as a committee, excuse me, really talked about like how we're going to collect information from both sides, whether it's from an administrator who's evaluating or someone who's being evaluated, so that we can make any adjustments. Because this is a working document, so we can always make changes and present them to the state for approval. I mean, we would obviously have to come to you and talk to you and let you know what those changes are going to be. But our plan is to get as much feedback as possible. So maybe we didn't get the focus groups beforehand, but we're going to make sure that we get input continuing through this coming year.
It's actually agenda item number one for our first meeting next year, yeah.
All right, awesome. And then I know I just kind of want to echo, Mrs. Pickett kind of addressed it too. I know I'm a big fan of like the SMART goals and, you know, I think you guys can incorporate some of that, especially the time bound, where you talk about the one year and potentially two or three years. So I guess the last question I had, I know when you were talking about non-tenured teachers and you had identified the cohorts by years of service in Enfield, and I want to ask, is there a specific reason you did that? Because I know we do have educators that come in that may have been tenured in other districts, like a neighboring district, they may have been there for eight years, but now they're coming to Enfield and it seems like they're going to immediately default into that cohort. So is that kind of addressed and is there a reason to keep them in that?
Well, we both might, the answering you on this, but we again, had a lot of conversation about that and part of it was we wanted them to, we wanted to see how they are going to do in Enfield, where the current manual, if you have tenure status in Connecticut, you have the ability to start on our track, it's like year three and four. If you are from another state, even if it was Massachusetts and you taught in Springfield, you are considered a year one. So there was already some of that in play in our previous manual where you might not have been in the cohort you thought you should be in if you had 20 years. But then we also had to think about it, what if we end up getting someone who maybe has 20, 25 years of experience, but they have a lot of places where they could grow and, you know, they need a lot of support. We didn't want them to all of a sudden now be in cohort three and I don't want to say we're stuck with them, but we're stuck with them. And what do we do? So this gives us the ability to make sure they have the proper support and they fit in Enfield before it's too late.
I'll just add to that, I mean, Enfield wasn't the only school district struggling with how to come up with a tangible plan based on really vague guidelines. So the, the manual that is going to exist in Summers or Newington or South Windsor is, and it's going to have sort of the same philosophical backbone, but the, the application of practice of the evaluation manual could be quite different. So that's the other reason why, you know, you may be in 15 years, but if you come to Enfield, maybe from a very different community that had sort of a different approach or, or focus to evaluation, we just wanted to give them those supports rather than sort of being shell-shocked by, wow, this is way different than what I used to do, so.
Awesome, all right, thank you. And again, to kind of, I think this is going to echo what Mrs. Pickett said, but obviously with next year changing, with structure, organization, this being new, I think it would be good maybe through the chair to the interim super to put something on the agenda for maybe, you know, fall or mid next year, kind of have you guys circle back, maybe give an updated presentation and how's this working with evaluators and stuff like that. So I just want to kind of plant that seed now, so we can kind of, you know, the board can get feedback and if we do have to adjust policy, if you guys are adjusting the plan and send it to the state, then maybe we could at least hear that and have some input on that. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Callen?
I'd like to congratulate you on a great presentation and a great, great work. So this is really a positive development, I think. Instead of being judgmental, I think this is more reflective so that instead of saying, let's find out what you may be doing wrong, what you're really asking is where, is there an opportunity for you to develop to the best of your capability? So I think that's fantastic. I think it's the sort of review that a teacher may actually look forward to rather than dreading. I guess my one question is, it seems to me that you really, really want to bend over backwards to work with teachers to see to it that they're, they're achieving their objectives and that, in that sense, that they are succeeding. Do you think that there is a danger that in your attempts to work with teachers, it may take you quite a while to come to a realization with respect to a few teachers that they're really not suitable for the job? And if that's the case, are we making it difficult to terminate those teachers?
I'm very happy you asked that question because you're touching upon the great myth, as I like to call it. The great myth is the idea that in terms of an educator evaluation system, you have to have some sort of mechanism in there to, to punish those people that are unfit or to eliminate them, to get rid of them. Actually, what that does, when you, when you attach discipline to evaluation, it completely erodes trust in the system. So if our main goal is to try to get teachers to take a risk, they're not going to do that if they feel it's a gotcha system. And the big myth is the idea that evaluation has to have a mechanism to remove teachers. It doesn't. There's a state law, the Teacher Fair Dismissal Act, and one of the, one of the six reasons listed is ineffectiveness in the classroom. So as long as there's clear documentation that, that is being made over a consistent amount of time and as long as that teacher is, is not cut out from representation, I mean, you know, hey, I came and observed, you had a great lesson, you, you hit all your points, you hit your objectives. One thing though, you had that kid duct taped to a chair in a corner and bound, like that, that's not, that's not something where we're going to, it's not even part of your evaluation, that's immediate, just in, you know, behavior that, that should lead to a movement for dismissal, you know, whether it be insubordination, ineffectiveness, what I- I forget all the six reasons. But that's a philosophical discussion we had early on and a decision, and all of these things we put in came from consensus from a very diverse group of people. We all agreed there was no dissent among the group that we have to decouple teacher discipline from evaluation. And that may not, that may seem weird, but the reason for it is, when you add discipline to evaluation, it erodes, completely erodes trust in the process. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Kalman. All right, anybody else? Have any other questions?
Okay, I have a couple of questions. How many goals is an educator allowed to have?
They must have at least one. They can have as many as they would like.
Okay, all right. And then, obviously, the goals can span, you can have one that's like an immediate one-year, and then you can have one that's like a three-year. It doesn't matter. Okay. I think you kind of touched on it, but not wholly. With the cohorts, what happens when you have somebody that's been teaching for 10 years not in our district? What cohort did they come into?
There you go. So if, let's say they had 10 years, they would have to, they would be in cohort two.
So they, all right, so whether or not they were in the district or not, if they're like past that five-year mark, they're going to go into that cohort. Okay, just wanted to make sure. The thing that I kind of liked about this, and I think a couple of people touched on it, was that this will push teachers who may have become stagnant to maybe take those risks that they haven't thought of before, and push them kind of out of their comfort zone. So that's, it's a good thing for their growth. So I like that about this one. Then the other question I had was, will your committee be able to somehow collect feedback on student impact, and then maybe come back and give, or an update on how that part of this whole process works?
So I know that, and just discussing with the committee about what we have to do, by the way, we have to, by law, we have to meet at least three times a year. And so we know a gen item number one is garnering feedback from the teachers about the whole system, what they like and don't like about it. But the other piece, I mentioned earlier, there's not a lot of connectivity right now between how PD is developed and what our committee does, and we're trying to bridge that a bit more. So we decided we're going to start with collection of goals, and we're going to see where the thematic sort of unity is, and then make the recommendation to the administration, like, this, these are areas. We're seeing a ton of goals about numeracy. We're seeing a ton of goals about social, emotional, and that's what we're going to start with. And then I think, once we build that piece, we can get to the piece that you're talking about, which is the, how are people choosing to measure these, these goals? Yeah, that's.
Yeah, because I mean, it's not, not everything is about test scores. It's also about how the kids are just doing in the class in general. So that would be interesting.
I know with the previous manual, I want to say the first three to five years, we were gaining a lot of feedback, making adjustments. At first, we only had one rubric, and then we created rubrics for specialists, and we really made it more comprehensive. So I'm foreseeing a lot of work on our hands in the next few years when we get that feedback, and then kind of going out and getting even more feedback. And, you know, it's, like I said, it's a working draft, and then we have to do that with the administrators' manual as well. So we've only begun with creating what we have so far.
All right, cool. Yeah, that manual was definitely comprehensive. And when you got into like the tier three and like what has to happen, that was, that was pretty detailed. So thank you for all the hard work that your whole committee put in, and thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Did you guys consider at all, and I know this is a touchy subject, department heads, or something similar to a department head, somebody who, within their own department, again, using social studies, would be the, kind of the one who pushes everything if you see something that's, that's definitely wrong?
In terms of evaluation, you can't, unless a department head, which I don't believe is in the contract anymore, unless they have an O92, they can't be involved. A department chairperson's certification, I think it's 105, the certification code, you have to have an O92 in order to evaluate. And that came about with the, the state reevaluating the education laws back in 2013. So it wouldn't work in terms of evaluating people.
However, there are a lot of teachers who, well, not a lot, there's a number of teachers that do have the O92. They're still teaching in a classroom, though. You know, do you want to be an administrator or not be an administrator? Do you want to be a teacher or not be a teacher?
To evaluate the administrative duty, to be an evaluator, the administrative duties have to be more than 50% of what they do. So if you're talking about a classroom teacher, teaches most of the time, but then helps out with the value, that's actually not allowable by law.
All right, anybody else?
So, Man Chair, if there's no more questions, I'll make, I'll move that the board approve the teacher and administrator evaluation plan as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Coburn, second by Mr. Janitis. Discussion? Anybody? No? Oh, go ahead.
This is, this will start this school year, by the way?
Yeah, okay.
And that's one of the reasons why with the calendar, we had the third day of PD, because we have to roll this out for the whole district. So thank you for doing that, by the way.
All right. Okay, roll call, please.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Mr. Janitis?
Yes.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right. So moving on to 11B, approval of the 2425 Head Start Program Improvement Plan.
Closed in your packet is a detailed memo from Jaclyn Valley, Director of Early Childhood Initiatives, about the 2024-25 Program Improvement Plan. They recently completed their annual program improvement plan, which includes a program review and assessment of program goals and data. Chairwoman Riley, Dr. Kalman, and Mrs. Pickett were active participants during this process. Tonight, they are looking for board approval for the 2024-25 Head Start Program Improvement Plan, governing board approval statement, and self-assessment summary and program improvement that requires Chairwoman Riley to endorse Dr. Kalman, oh, to endorse them. Dr. Kalman or myself can address any questions from the board members. Therefore, the Enfield Board of Education may take any action deemed appropriate regarding approving the 2425 Head Start Program Improvement Plan, governing board improvement statement, and self-assessment summary and program improvement plan as presented.
All right. Let's put the motion on the floor, on the floor first, and then we can discuss. So, I need a motion to approve the 2425 Head Start Program Improvement Plan, governing board approval statement, and self-assessment summary and program improvement plan as presented.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Pickett?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ryder. Okay, now discussion.
Go ahead.
I'm going to cut you in line again, Dr. Kalman.
Go ahead.
It was mentioned, thank you, Mr. Longi, that I, along with Dr. Kalman and Chairwoman Riley, were able to participate in this self-evaluation process. I want to commend the Head Start team that put together that thoughtful reflection. So much information provided ahead of time that we could review and look at, thoughtful questions, really interactive. And I think there's so many lessons learned in the self-assessment that don't only support Head Start, but actually support us as a district. And I will continuously say that I think we should be looking at what's going on at Stowe and saying, what can we replicate across the district as far as some practices and things being implemented there. So thank you, Head Start, and all those that participated. There were families, there were kiddos, and there was delicious food by our culinary students. So thank you.
Dr. Kalman, yes?
Yeah, I just wanted to say a few words, basically reiterating what Mr. Longi and what Amanda already said. But as you know by now, Head Start is required to reassess its five-year plan on an annual basis. And this latest review began on May 1st with a self-assessment session involving Head Start leadership, parents, and community stakeholders, on which I've already reported. The observations and suggestions made in the course of this session were used to generate a program improvement plan, which we have before us, enumerating a number of issues that the plan calls upon the Head Start leadership to address, along with expected intervention outcomes, action steps, persons responsible, follow-up measures, and resources available. And I'm not going to go over the specific issues addressed. We've all had a chance to review the report. Suffice it to say that the list was very comprehensive, and the approach to each issue was extremely thorough and well-thought-out. I just wanted to cite two examples of how a periodic review like this can really pay off. First, as a result of plans such as this, Head Start has been able to implement an innovative approach to PLAY, and its integration into Head Start activities. Any early childhood expert will tell you how important PLAY is in the cognitive, social, and emotional development of children. This drew so much positive attention that representatives from three other Connecticut school districts came to Enfield to find out how we managed to do it, a testimony, I think, to the ingenuity of our Head Start team. Secondly, plans like this allow us to take a bird's eye view of the landscape we're inspecting, so that all manners of problems and their respective solutions can be identified. Some problems, like the phenomenon of a higher absentee rate involving Hispanic children attending Head Start, can be very challenging, and the solution's not entirely clear, sometimes not at all clear. But a bird's eye view can also shed light on important problems and their solutions that are so obvious and so ubiquitous that they can be entirely overlooked. An example, under Item 3, Healthy Intake, we read a recommendation to, quote, "educate all members of our community on the benefits of drinking water." Of course, nothing could be more important in the kind of sweltering weather we've been experiencing, and yet, we forget about it all the time, to the detriment of ourselves and our children. So it takes a report like this to remind us of this simple and cheap but potentially life-saving measure. I did have one question about the data presented. On the very last page of this report, there was dramatic improvement noted with respect to four-year-olds in meeting or exceeding the standards for the developmental age, but in no instance did performance exceed the breakpoint of 85%. So my question is, can somebody explain the reason for this, and what plans may you have in place to address it, if indeed that's even necessary? And why the difference in performance between the three-year-olds and the four-year-olds? So I would like to finish by congratulating Jaclyn Valley and her Head Start team for managing a truly exceptional school and program. This town is very lucky to have them. Thank you so much.
Anybody else? Mr. Coburn?
Thank you, Man Chair. So just some questions and some comments, and I know, again, we did get this material in advance. We unfortunately didn't get a full presentation here, but I know we all should have had a good chance to kind of read it. So I'm kind of glad it seemed like there was a very large focus group or committee that kind of came together through Head Start that developed this. I think some of the goals related to school readiness are, you know, on point with what we need. And actually, Dr. Kalman may have addressed some of these, or at least parcel, questions. But I know the goal, I think it was Goal 3, which he had just talked about with the reference of drinking water. So the goal talks about increased healthy eating by making recommendations to kids and staff from, using data gleaned from stakeholders and self-assessment. So is it, is Head Start, do they run their own nutrition, or do they, is it, they're still provided by our nutrition services? Do we know?
They have their own food there.
They do have their own food. Okay.
Correct. They prepare their own food there, yes.
They do prepare their own food. Okay. So that clarified that question, because I was wondering what, you know, enforcement mechanism they would have to actually implement the recommendation. So thank you for that. And then the other question, and this is for, you know, whomever has the ability to answer, and I know, I think Dr. Kalman may have touched on one of the problems, but where it talked about, you know, the goal of improving attendance, it talks about the comprehensiveness of attendance data and collection data by incorporating, incorporating detailed demographic information, including language, race, ethnicity, socioeconomic status, transportation availability, and special education status. And then I know Dr. Kalman indicated that there may have been higher levels of chronic absenteeism against Hispanic subgroups. So do we have, do we already have more data on that, and that, do we know the level of disparity in that, I guess, that drove this as a goal?
Specifically for Head Start?
Correct, specifically for Head Start.
They have, yeah. Then they had a graph that we stood in front of, and it showed every demographic and their absenteeism, right, and their ages.
So, so for example, is the Hispanic demographic that's mentioned here, is it, do we know the rate, like, is it double the other demographics? Is there a reason it was single?
It's disproportionate. So it's all, the chronic absent rate is based on proportionate number of students. So it was a disproportionate amount of Hispanic students are facing, are more chronically absent than their, their other race peers. I think I said that correctly.
Okay. No, and that's, that's what I was getting at. If we already had data on the front end, I just, you know, I was kind of inquisitive of that data. So, all right. That's all I had. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Okay, so, roll call, please.
Roll call for the Head Start Improvement Plan. Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Mr. Janitis?
I'll abstain.
Mr. Coburn?
Abstain as well.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Thank you. Passes?
All right. So discussion and action regarding the July 9th Board of Ed meeting. Okay, so the July 9th Board of Ed meeting, since we have interviews set up that week and the week prior for the superintendent, it's a recommendation that we make the July 9th meeting a special meeting to vote on who will be our next superintendent at that point, correct?
Yes. So that would be my recommendation. As a board, you can do what you want, but we're running out of time very quickly.
Right.
And with summer, staff is going to start disappearing, and, as well as your own schedule. So we want to be really conscious of that. If the goal from this board, which I believe it is, and I agree with, is to really have a good process for superintendent search, and once you finish your two interviews, to be ready to come out and have a special meeting to vote on that, that's what would be my recommendation, is you turn that meeting, which is normally canceled because of the nature of it, keep that date, keep the time at 5:00, but we make the agenda into a special meeting with one agenda item. Again, that's up to, up to you as a board, to vote on and discussion and action any of your next superintendent.
So I'll just add some discussion. I know, I think, the board, we are in consensus that we do want to rapidly select a superintendent, and I know this is after the interviews.
Mr. Coburn, I just have a question. Should we make the motion first and then have, move to have discussion?
We, I mean, we could do it either way.
I just want to, like, for parliamentary purposes.
Why don't we make the motion first, and then we'll finish the discussion.
Yeah, that's all. I was just, for those purposes. Okay. All right, sorry.
Only because that's how we usually do it, and I'll probably forget to make the motion at that point.
So moved to make, ooh, to, are we looking to cancel? What are we doing?
Change the July 9th Board of Ed meeting to a special meeting.
So I make a motion to change our July 9th meeting to a special meeting.
So moved. Ms. Pickett, second by?
Miss me.
Mrs. LeBlanc. Quick, go ahead.
All right. So I'll continue then and clarify that I am against this motion. So I agree we need to hire, and it would be efficient to hire directly after that. My worry would be a special meeting is a quicker meeting with just one agenda item, and it would negate any other business that we could possibly handle, to include the ability for audiences to come in and address the board with any information that we would need. I think we could still handle this with just a regular meeting and just keep the regular meeting format with the only item in 11 being, you know, still have an executive session if we need further discussion, but just keeping the vote for a potential superintendent nominee at that point, rather than make it more of a rapid, less transparent special meeting, I guess, would be my concern.
If I could just jump into, I will not be at that meeting at 5:00. I start college courses, so Michelle Middleton will be here. So if it is a full meeting, you, I don't, if, whether you care or not, I won't be here. But I don't know if that factors into your decision as well. But I will, I will, if it's a regular meeting, I probably wouldn't get here till later on, if I can find a parking spot. So I just want to know that.
And then I guess a question in the interim super. Did we, is that, the regular meeting currently is at 7:00, right? I don't think we changed that one for the concert, did we?
No, it's still at 7:00, because it's a meeting that we normally cancel.
that we normally cancel. So the action item was going to be, should we cancel the July 9th meeting? But we had a discussion in leadership that we should not cancel it, but that we should move it to a special meeting to continue on with the process of potentially hiring a superintendent.
So then to clarify the motion, are you guys are planning a special meeting at 5:00 p.m.? Or are you planning a special meeting for 7:00 p.m.?
A time was not made in the motion.
No, I thought Mr. Longi said he recommended we have it at 5:00 p.m.
I thought there were still concerts going on. That's why I said 5:00.
There is.
Well, that's why. You're not going to get parking.
Okay. I'll just conclude my comments, and I would still be in favor of keeping it as a regular meeting in order to have additional business as needed, you know, beyond superintendent, if we need budget discussions, MOU follow-up, stuff like that, payroll, so, that's all I got.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah. I too think it should be a regular meeting, and I think people should be able to come up and make comments. We could be, make that just the only thing on the agenda, but to let people come up and speak after what we went through last night, where we were criticized for not opening it up and, you know, just having one candidate and stuff like that, I think we owe the public to let them say whatever it is that they want to say.
Can I ask a question? Clarifying question. The candidates that we're interviewing are still going to be, still going to be confidential.
It's critical that their names are confidential.
Right, so when we go in to vote on the 9th, nobody is supposed to know who that candidate is.
That's correct.
Until executive session, and then we come out and we vote the appointment.
That's correct.
Thank you.
I didn't even think of that. Thanks.
Okay. And anybody else? So, I'm just going to put my two cents in. The meeting, that next meeting is on July 9th. The only meetings, I believe, that are going to occur between now and then is basically the, well, the interviews, but that July 9th, the, at 5:00, is the finance meeting, right, on the 8th?
Correct. The finance committee will be meeting on Monday, July 8th, and we will optimistically be doing June payroll and any line item transfers for the current year.
So then, could we, since nothing else will really occur between then, since we're taking care of most of the business, could we then just make that special meeting be, to take care of the superintendent, right, and then just to do one item of finance, since that's really the only thing that's going to come up between now and then?
Yes, and I mean, I would still recommend that we, again, keep, because a special meeting, we could have audiences, normally we don't, but we could, in understanding that they're not going to know the candidate, but theoretically, we just closed audiences. So the next time, if we cancel the regular meeting, and we might cancel the other July meeting, the next time that the public would have any ability to comment on the superintendent's search or selection at all is not going to be till late July, possibly August. So, you know, whether or not they know the candidates, we may get additional information, input from them, and then, you know, so I would still like to at least see that item. So maybe if we did executive session, superintendent, audiences, approval of council payroll, maybe that would be an acceptable agenda.
So what if we did public comment, approval of accounts and payroll, then executive session, and appointment of superintendent? Would that be agreeable? No? Okay. So.
I mean, we discussed in leadership.
Right, I know.
About the fact that we wouldn't have, there's not enough staff that we could get to fill a board guest item. There's also, would be no, not a lot of committee reports, because policy's not meeting again, curriculum's not meeting again, there's no school events that are going on.
Right.
I'm just going to go with Mr. Longi's recommendation of having a special meeting to announce the superintendent. That's where I'm going to go with his recommendation.
Well, I think Chair Riley's still reaffirming the special meeting proposal with just further amendments as to what's on the agenda. That kind of has that out now.
Right, I'm not going to support further amendments. I'm going to go with the initial recommendation from Mr. Longi.
Okay. Can I ask a clarifying question? A, we have definitions of, like, what a special meeting is and what a regular Board of Ed meeting is. So if we are proposing, the motion on the floor is for a special meeting on July 9th at 5:00 p.m. to appoint a superintendent, but I'm hearing executive session. Will we be, will the special meeting agenda be an executive session and then an appointment? Or are we going to do our deciding, our executive session of decision?
No.
I'm confused, like, when is that happening?
It's a great question. So, the way I would see it, and I think Kathy agreed with this before she left, is that that special meeting would be one agenda item, and that would be a motion to nominate the next superintendent for the Enfield Public Schools. You would have discussion, and then you would vote. That's all an open session.
So then, when we are in executive session on the 8th, we would, at that point, discuss who our decision would be?
That's correct. So on, the agenda item for the 8th is, there's one interview, and then you have an executive session discussion related to personnel, where, as a group, you would then have that discussion about the three candidates. That is correct.
Okay.
So again, I just want to make sure that the motion then is to clarify for me and maybe for others, July 9th, special meeting at 5:00 p.m. with one agenda item to make an appointment of our next superintendent.
That's correct. An open session.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? No? Okay, so, roll call.
Okay, so just to be clear, so this roll call is for the July 9th meeting to be at 5:00 as a special meeting with one agenda item, okay? Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
Yes.
Mr. Coburn?
No.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
All right, so, 11D, discussion and action regarding Board of Ed letter to state leaders. Okay, so, basically, I kind of drafted a letter and then brought it to leadership, and leadership had their input on a letter that I would love to have, I'm actually kind of excited to send this to the state, and if you guys will let me, I would like to read it in the public so that the public could at least hear what we have, and then we can talk about it after that. So, this is to, it's addressed to the Honorable Ned Lamont at the State Capitol. This is a letter regarding the State Department of Education and its relationship with Enfield, Connecticut. So it says, "Dear Governor Lamont, Lieutenant Governor Susan Bysowicz, Charlene Tucker, and members of the State Board of Education. As you may have heard in the news and through various channels of legislators and advocates, Enfield is in and has been in a difficult position. Since its designation in 2022 as the 36th addition to the Alliance District, Enfield has been passed over repeatedly for additional Alliance funding. Pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 10-262U, this establishes a process for identifying Alliance districts and allocating increased education cost-sharing funding to support district strategies to dramatically increase student outcomes and close achievement gaps. Each Alliance district's receipt of its designated ECS funding is conditioned upon district submission and the Commissioner of Education's approval plan, approval of a plan, the district progress and performance relative to that plan, and subsequent annual amendments in the context of the district's overall strategy to improve academic achievement. We have documentation from May 2022 that we would not be receiving additional Alliance district funding, and therefore, no plan was needed to be provided. We were told that our ECS funding would be frozen instead of decreasing as our consolation prize. We were also given the opportunity, and specifically told, to apply for grants to pay for capital improvements at our schools under the Alliance designation. Once those applications were submitted, it was then told to Enfield that we were ineligible due to not having Tier One or Tier Two schools. Even though we have still not received any additional monies to date from the Alliance district designation, we have still moved forward implementing our own pathways to success. Examples of this work include creating interventions in the classroom, implementing instructional coaches, expanding our high school pathways to include introduction to education courses, creating a new teacher evaluation system, developing a state-of-the-art early childhood education program, integrating Head Start with our other pre-K learners, creating policies for FASCA completion by all seniors, implementing credit recovery at the high school, increasing test scores, hiring social workers, increasing behavior supports, including hiring behavioral technicians, and we are in the process of implementing a new reading program. We, the Enfield Board of Education, believe that we should be removed from the list of Alliance districts, as we have not received any of the additional funding or benefits that should be used for supporting district strategies to dramatically increase student outcomes and close achievement gaps, and have done this work on our own. We are asking to be respectfully removed from this designation, since all it has caused has been intense community division and an increased lack of confidence in our school district, as well as creating a void in our budget leading to a shortfall for the current fiscal year. To demonstrate just how devastating our compounding shortfall has been, we have had to cut the following for the 24-25 school year. We cut 127.5 staff members from the budget, including non-tenured and tenured teachers, secretaries, administrators, guidance counselors, social workers, behavioral technicians, et cetera. We cut numerous electives at the high school, bringing back large study halls. We cut academic coaches, STEAM teachers, reading and math specialists. We cut career counselors at the high school, dramatically increased class sizes at all levels, eliminated the team concept at the middle school due to staff shortages, eliminated Board of Ed-funded security at all levels, cut district-wide professional development opportunities, cut middle school and ninth-grade sports, cut student activity accounts for students, limiting after-school clubs and opportunities, cut district-funded AP and SAT testing, and cut EMT and College Connections programs. These actions have decimated our district and have spilled over to place additional financial risk to our town as well. Adding to the shortfall of the current fiscal year is the lack of excess cost grant funding at the appropriate rate. Passed during the 2023 legislative session, Section 8 of Connecticut Acts 23-1, districts with the lowest wealth municipalities ranked 115 to 169 would be reimbursed at 91% of their uncapped grant amount. Enfield falls in this rank, however, in the end, we were only reimbursed at 71%. That shorted us $414,126 for this current year that was unbudgeted. To add more salt to the wound, after our budget was made, we were notified that for the 24-25, the grant will be at 67%, nowhere near the 91% originally promised. Further compounding this problem to not only Enfield, but all districts, is that these reimbursements have been provided to all eligible districts at a prorated amount due to the excess cost grant never, not ever being fully funded by the state. Excess cost kicks in only after the district has already paid 4.5 times the per pupil cost for their district. So for example, a district whose per pupil expenditure is $18,000, they must pay $63,000 more before excess cost kicks in. If a district has 50 students that meet that threshold, which is not a stretch considering just Enfield's special needs population alone is 1,081 students, the district has already paid out of their pocket $3,150,000 before the state steps in. By not fully funding excess costs, the burden furthers, and in a district like Enfield, where 78 new special education students moved into district just this year, the burden is immense. At what point will the state realize districts cannot continue to absorb all these costs? When will the state fully fund the excess cost portion that is stated in Connecticut Statute, Section 8 of Connecticut Acts 23-1? The state already mandates all the things which districts are required to fund with their own money, like the new mandated reading program, the new mandated air quality testing, and the extension of the special needs age requirement to the full year of the student's 22nd birthday. This is only a small sampling of those recent unfunded mandates. We, the Enfield Board of Education, respectfully ask for the shorted amount of excess cost for the fiscal year '23-'24 and the amount of $414,126. To show just how much these things compound, doing a five-year lookback would show that we were shorted excess cost by over $2 million. This is simply not sustainable year after year. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Should you have any questions, please feel free to contact us. Respectfully yours, the Enfield Public Schools Board of Education. So, everybody could sign it afterwards if they so wish, and then send it, and I would like to also send it to the JI so they can publish it, so the state's fully aware of what's going on, and I've had other districts express interest in writing their own letters regarding excess cost. So, that was what I put out there.
So, Madam Chair, to facilitate discussion then, I'll introduce the motion to approve the Board of Ed letter as written to state leaders.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Coburn, seconded by?
Dr. Kalman.
Dr. Kalman, and discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Coburn.
All right, thank you. So I'll chip in, and I know we had talked about this during caucus last night, so I'll kind of reiterate some of my comments and thoughts about the letter. So, I know this has been a very popular topic in public discourse, obviously, the current year budget shortfall, next year's budget, issues and the massive cuts. So I, I'm on track with the intent of this letter to some extent, and then there's some portions where I would probably demur. So it seems like the letter is written, and we're asking the state for two things. We're asking to be removed as the Alliance designation, and then we're also asking, essentially asking for money to be made whole through the excess grant funding. So, in terms of, you know, the board asking the state to be removed from the Alliance district designation, I am on board with that. I don't see any issue with us asking the question. You know, you never know unless you ask, and it's, you know, it's been brought up and it's identified that we don't have any tangible benefit from being an Alliance district. And we talked about how the state used to have 30, then it went up to 33, then it went up to 36, and we happen to be number 36. So, that part, I think, is an important question that I would be on board with, with asking the state. As far as going ahead and asking the state for the excess cost money, I would hesitate on that. I don't think it's a realistic ask, and I don't think it's going to go anywhere. When we, we're talking about the budget cuts and the effect of the current year, we're being short over 5.6, just over 5.6 million. Next year, at our May 29th meeting, we already had to do $9 million worth of cuts. I think we're, and I'm no fan of the state, but I think we're throwing some unfair blame at the state. I mean, if we're talking Alliance money, we've brought up, it's 1.4 million a year, so that's a yearly thing for the Alliance district money that we're questioning, and then even the excess cost, when we're talking 67%, 91%, 91%, we're still, the number being asked is like 400-something thousand. So, I think it would be ill-advised of us to start asking the state for money when this, this is not going to make us whole, and this is not going to solve anything. I think more of the concern, the introspection, and maybe the problem-solving needs to be done here at the local level. I think it's between the administration, this board, and the council for making adjustments, acquiring funding, and then utilizing that funding. I think if we, like I said, my point is, I think if we go ahead and ask the state for 400,000, that's not going to do anything, and then we'll, the nine of us will probably be fighting where to apply that 400,000 based off of previous meetings. So even if we got it, I don't think that's going to solve anything, which, again, being realistic, not optimistic, I can't see us getting that money from the state when they've already expended all the money that they've appropriated for ECS. Also, just in a general sense, I know our caucus, one of the members of our caucus generated a, an amended letter, and it got sent out. I believe everybody got it, so I kind of agreed with more than that. One of the concerns with the original letter, I think it's being two pages and two hearty pages. You know, a lot of people, we're all struggling for time, not everybody's reading things. I think if you send something this long to state leadership, in the most respectable sense, they're probably not going to read the entire thing. I think we need to get them a letter that's one page, two paragraphs at most, very clear, concise, to the point, what are we asking, you know, the five Ws, who's, who, what, where, when, and why? And, for example, we are the town of Enfield, we're an Alliance district, we're not getting any money, we request to be removed. I think something as quick as that would be more palatable to state leaders than a longer thing that I think would be good. This is good information to get out there. I'm on board with, if we do agree on a version of this letter, getting it out to the press. But again, I think, putting myself in the role of a state leader, I can't imagine them doing anything with this that would end up benefiting us, so. Those are my thoughts at this point. So, those are my thoughts at this point.
Okay. Mr. Coburn, I've been in touch with state leadership, so they know this letter is coming. They're quite aware of the predicament we've been put in by the state. I think that I support the letter. I don't mind asking them for money because they're breaking their own law. Their law says they are supposed to 100% fund us. They're breaking their law, their mandate, not their mandate, their law. So, I think what is striking to me is we've received many links about the excess cost share formula, and we're still getting links saying the excess cost share formula is 91%. So, they haven't fixed their links yet. I think it's important that we have to hold the state accountable because our legislators aren't. There is, there needed to be things going on on the floor to secure funding for Enfield as an alliance district. We are dependent upon the money that comes in from the state, and I don't see how managing it just here, I mean, we have to take into consideration that we're going to get money back on the excess cost share. You know, there's just different streams that come into us. So, I don't mind asking for it because it's in writing. It's how much we've been shortened. I'm pretty frustrated with the state of Connecticut. The night we had the June 13th meeting, Mr. Longi had a calculation, and basically, if we had gotten the alliance funding, the amount that we would have been short this year was exactly our special ed costs, which was around $2.5 million. I think that the way they designated us an alliance district, and then, they were actually 33, then when they went to 36, I think is not right, and I think it's time we start holding the state accountable for them not coming through, and telling towns one thing and doing another, and not having any accountability for it.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Janitis.
Okay, here's a new one. I'm not completely in agreement with Mr. Coburn. I think this letter should not only go to the governor, but it should go to the Senate, the leader of the Senate, the leader of the General Assembly, the minority leaders in both houses, the Department of Education, and I would also hit the news outlets, not just the JI, but all these TV people that were down here interviewing the ETA and stuff. Contact every one of those TV stations, and I would also send it to WTIC and W...
FSB?
Like 561?
No, the radio.
Oh.
WTIC, I can't remember the other one. WHI? No, not it. Never mind. There's another one that talks all the time. I go back and forth between them. But the point is, I think we should send it out to multiple people and multiple groups. Somebody is going to read the thing, two pages. I think more than one people will read it, and this could start, you know, this is the kindling that hopefully can start a fire.
I would have to say I agree with Peter on that. Like, I think multiple news sources need to be made aware, and that's one of the conversations I had with one of the state leaders, that this is where we are. We're Enfield, and we're mad, and we're tired. And so, I agree with Peter on that.
Miss Pickett? Oh, sorry. Dr. Kalanen?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think this all gets to why we're sending the letter in the first place. Are we going to get our money or get our money back? Maybe, maybe not, probably not. But that may not be the entire point. The point is that we have to hold the state's feet to the fire and to make this very, very public, make them accountable for not giving Enfield the money that it had a right to expect. And so, I guess, I guess that's, I think, I think this is a very good letter, and I wouldn't change a word of it.
Thank you, Dr. Kalanen. Go ahead, Miss Pickett.
All right. I agree that we've not had representatives in the state legislature ensuring that Enfield receives the funding that we deserve, or ensuring that the legislation that is written actually favors us. I think it's important that we clarify who the state is and who needs to be held accountable. I'm going to say for me, the state is our elected officials at the state level, and they need to be held accountable. They write the laws, and they determine the formulas and the assurance of funding coming to Enfield. I see that the real way to change this is in our vote in November.
The other radio station was WDRC. Finally came to me, senior moment. Not only the people that I said that we should send the letter to, I think we should also send it to just about every other school board, particularly the one, the alliance district schools, send them a copy of this letter, and maybe that would generate them doing the same thing.
The only issue with that is they all got their money.
Doesn't make any difference. Someday, they might not.
Well, there's, I know, but to our point, there's 36 alliance districts in the state of Connecticut, and 35 of them were funded. Only Enfield was not. And to Mr. Coburn's point about the alliance district piece of the letter, you don't know if you don't ask. So, I think what you did, Chairman Riley, is great, and I support this letter.
Just, you know, we shouldn't treat this like a fait accompli. It's not a fait accompli. It's still very much an active issue, and the state has to be held accountable.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Pickett.
Well, I know it was a topic that came up in our caucus last night, and the suggestion was to streamline it, which was what the second letter, the revised, was. The other, the concern that I had as I read it was that there were two requests in the letter, and it seemed as if the first one got lost in the text of it, because by the time you reached the end of it, you really only, the attention was really on the ask for that reimbursement of that final percentage. And so, the revised one also put both requests at the end of the letter to keep it as a point of attention. So, I don't know. I know, Charlotte, you had mentioned perhaps editing your original one to, you know, have that format.
Yeah, the other, yeah, the other suggestion I had, if you thought we needed to put them, the questions together, is that I could just move the "we," the Enfield Board of Education, both of them at the end. But...
Can everybody get this?
Yes.
I just want to get to the state before the end of the fiscal year, and hopefully other districts can hop on board, and you don't know if you don't try. So, I don't know if we'll get it. I don't know if we'll get removed from the alliance, and I don't know if we'll get the money, but if we could get something, then that's good.
I want to say thank you for writing that letter. You know how frustrated we've been, banging our heads against, while learning a lot about House bills, who's putting the House bills out, which legislator. It was a real eye-opener for me. I appreciate Lieutenant Governor taking the time to explain a lot of this stuff to me over the last couple of weeks. So, I appreciate you writing this letter, and I will support it and move forward. Again, like Mr. Coburn's saying, you don't know unless you ask. So, this is nothing that's ever been done before, but we've never been put in this position before, and it's time for us to come forward.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. So, then, I guess I need, where to put the motion? Go for it. What would you like?
I don't know. Peter was just saying, do I want to speak on the differences of the letters? I mean, I feel like I might have, you know, just in terms of streamlining it, you know, to say upfront about the dramatic increase of our costs and, you know, what affected it and caused that shortfall. Another, just a concern that I had is in that second, or the first main paragraph of yours, of that original letter, where it was talking about what we have done as a district to ensure positive student outcomes, that there seems like there's things that are mixed in there that are unfunded mandates as well. Does that, let me see if I can...
What are you talking about?
So, where it lists the different things that we've done as a district.
Yep.
Let me go back to...
The teacher eval?
Yeah, and some of them seem like they were things that were required of us legislatively.
Yeah. So, basically, what I did when I got this is I read the statute for the alliance district, and examples of those things are basically what they highlight in that as examples of things that you should do with that money.
Right.
So, that's why I put them here, to show that, well, this is what you want.
To show them that we did it even without the funding.
Right. This is what you wanted, and we did it even though you didn't give us the money. That's why it was there, because that's like, part of those were actual ones that were in their alliance in that statute.
So, my concern was, so we've got, you know, the policy for the FAFSA completion, like, that's a federal mandate, but that's not really anything that, I was looking at the things that were listed as what contributed to our shortfall. And so, that, like, say, for example, the FAFSA completion, that's not something that was really in effect yet. The process of implementing a new reading program, wasn't that, doesn't that, wasn't that grant-funded?
Those are...
Implementation? This is all the first...
Very small amount was grant. You're picking up the tab on the rest of it.
Okay, so that wasn't completely grant-funded. Okay, I was linking the conversations that we had had in curriculum with Michelle, with Ms. Middleton. So, I recognize there are things that we had gone ahead and done ahead of time, you know, in terms of the hiring, the behavior techs, the social workers, the developmenting, the developing inclusive, the Head Start program. Like, those things I recognize came at a cost, but then I wasn't sure that if everything listed really was something that contributed to the, to our shortfall.
No, that was just me trying to illustrate that these are what you have as requirements, and we were fulfilling them.
Okay.
Whether or not they decided that they were going to give us the money as an alliance district or not. And so, saying that we already did it, then that's another, a further thing of, well, then why are we an alliance district? What benefits are we receiving? Not even monetary, but, you know, anything else? Access to other grants or programs? We've got nothing except for a divided community, basically, which...
I agree with that.
Which is not, not something I don't think anybody wants. Well, I definitely don't want it, but, I mean, it hasn't helped, for sure.
Go ahead.
I can live with both letters, but I prefer the second letter because of the brevity of it, and it's just right to the point, I think. I like the detail in the longer one, but I would prefer the second one, but I can support either one.
I figured the more detail would, would help the news outlets, you know, accurately convey the story.
That's a good point.
Since really, I mean, I don't know if anybody's watched and read and whatever, but every time the news says something about what's happening in Enfield, it's always never quite right. So, I'm like, by this, we're just kind of like set in a straight, this is what happened, this is why, you know, and this is what it is. That's why I was trying to be as detailed as possible, because then you're doing what all the news outlets want. They want you to do their work for them. Well, here you go. We did it for you.
That's a good point.
I mean, really.
Tonight at 6 o'clock, Charlotte O'Reilly.
So, go ahead, Ms. Akri.
I do support both letters, whatever we vote on. I was just curious, how did the other districts hear about you writing this letter?
So, there's, when you're a chair, CAVE has this, like, chair forum thing that you can listen to and talk, and then they have this email thing. And somebody had asked a question, you can, you get emails whenever somebody sends it to the main box, and one of the questions was, our district got a zero increase on our budget. Has any other districts had that happen before? And so, I said, well, I don't usually comment on these things because I don't, I just sit there and watch, because usually it's just like policy stuff and, you know, who decides? When does the school day start? Like, stuff like that. And I was like, well, let me tell you about Enfield. And I kind of went off on a tangent, and I said, you know, about the alliance district, and I said, but you know what the important thing is, is we all got posed on this excess cost by the state. Would anybody else want to get in on the letter with us to send to the state regarding excess cost? And I had some districts come back and say, yeah, we're interested, maybe not on your letter, but show us your letter, and then we'll write our own, and then all these districts can write their own letters to the state, all the same way, asking for that. So, that's how that happened. So, all right. We're good now? We're good? Everybody ready to go? Okay, so, roll call, please.
Before we vote, what...
Is this the long version?
On the original, I guess. Unless you want to make, yeah.
Which, to clarify, is the only one included in our packet, which is distributed publicly.
Voting on the letter that's in your packet to state leaders, Dr. Kalanen?
Yes.
Mrs. Kushman?
Yes.
Mr. Janitis?
Yes.
Mr. Coburn?
Obstain.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Obstain.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, so we're moving E and F to after 17. So, now we've got item 12, Board Committee Reports. Curriculum Committee is up first.
So, the curriculum meeting that was on July 20th was canceled, so now the next meeting schedule is on September 19th.
Finance and Budget Committee?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll apologize in advance, I won't be as brief as Curriculum.
Okay.
Finance and Budget met. Our last meeting was on Monday, June 3, 2024, at Central Office. Our next meeting will be Monday, July 8, at 5:00 PM in Central Office. At our June 3, 2024, meeting, we reviewed several items. We'll subsequently talk about approval of counts and payroll under Agenda Item 15 tonight, so I won't handle that, but I will talk about in committee that we address the FY24 budget status, which is the current year budget. I mentioned previously in our meetings, the budget summary base format that we get covers the original budget, the end-of-year projection, the balances, and some remarks. So, for the current FY24, which, to clarify, began 1 July 2023 and ends June 30, 2024. The general operating budget of the board, which is our approved budget, was $75,929,555. The end-of-year projection is $86,40,917. This is resulting in a balance of a overage of $10,111,361.87. That said, for the month of June, there is projected reimbursements coming into the town of $4,507,976.73, leading to a total deficit of $5,603,385.14. Beyond Finance Committee, as you are aware, this number was passed through the board to Council, and that is pending funding from the Town Council. For the current year budget, I just want to highlight some of the areas that led to the overage. Primarily line items covering staff, certified staff, we ended up being about $850,000 over budget. Non-certified staff, we ended up just being over $2.1 million over budget. Other staff, we were $1.5 million over budget. The benefits line item, we were $2.5 million over budget. Professional services, which does not include transportation, was just over $1 million over budget. Transportation was $562,000 projected to be over budget, and special education tuition is projected to end at $1.7 million over budget. The projected reimbursements that I mentioned, that's bringing that over $10 million number down to the 5.6, was discussed during Finance Committee. Those projected reimbursements include receiving payment from Hartford, tuition outplacement, open choice, receiving money from East Windsor, and receiving the last quarterly dose of excess cost, which we've been talking about. And there is other revenue coming in from Hartford Public Schools, Suffolk Public Schools, some Head Start grants that's covering items in our general operation budget, and activity accounts. So, that is the general operating budget summary. I do just kind of want to touch grants as well, because Finance Committee does receive a grants report monthly. So, the FY24 grants that we had applied for for this year, the total grants was $4,291,418.50. Out of those grants that we applied for, we had actually received $4,347,900 and... Out of those grants that we applied for, we had actually received $4,347,933 for grants. So those are additional funds that we had in FY '24 that we were able to spend on other expenditures. We did also discuss going forward, at least regarding the quarterly meetings, and during Board Comments, we talked about possibly having the finance manager from the BOE and the finance manager for the town kind of get together in what format. So we're going to be working way ahead of that, and that's kind of why, you know, it was mentioned in Finance, historically, we do cancel July and August meetings, but due to the nature of everything that's going on, it's important that we do meet in July, especially with the budget shortfall, our plan ahead, and we will, Finance will be busy with three different budgets. We'll have the current year budget that closes, we have the new approved budget that was revised for FY '25, and then it'll be time to begin next year's budget, which will be the FY ' '26 budget. So, and we were talking about the format that, again, we had highlighted earlier. So again, later on tonight, we'll be talking about accounts and payroll. I do just want to highlight, there was nothing significant to report to the Board when we get to that. There was an increase in payroll expenditures based off of previous months, so I did have a follow-up meeting with our finance manager, our payroll manager, and our HR director, just to kind of clarify where some of that money went. And it turns out, a lot of teachers and educators take time off at the end of the year, so they're still getting paid for that time, we need to bring in substitutes, long-term substitutes. We have some staff that left that have accrued sick personal time, for example, our superintendent who has left the district, well, he had accrued X number of days, so he was paid out for that as well. So that will address any increases in the payroll numbers when those are read into the record later on. And that will conclude the Finance and Budget Committee report.
Okay. Let's see. You can, yeah?
Okay, I'd like to just thank you for that clear, detailed explanation for the hard work you put in on the Finance Committee at time.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Did you and Lorena talk about, do you want to meet more than quarterly with the town? Or do you think that's sufficient enough?
So we're probably going to dive into that more during our July meeting. I think right now, our baseline will be quarterly, and that'll comply with the terms of the MOU. We did spitball monthly, and then myself as Committee Chair may meet with Lorena maybe in between the month, just in case there is any updates to the monthly report, we're not kind of as surprised.
Okay.
And then we did kind of discuss more open communication, again, between the Finance Director of the Town and that, so I know it's highlighted, again, when money comes in and we're not aware, and, you know, maybe their, their emails are going back and forth, but emails is kind of unpersonals, and maybe them even just having a sync meeting themselves, and then the Finance Committee kind of circling back on that. So, nothing has been, no final decisions have been made, and we do plan to explore more of that in our July meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Coburn. Okay, Policy Committee.
The Policy Committee has not met since our last meeting, but we will meet again on September 17th.
Okay, thank you. Leadership Committee, okay. So, we met on the 18th, we talked about the agenda, we talked about when we would be able to see the revised budget book, which should be within the next week or two. We talked about the MOU, and we also discussed Phil's transparency initiative, and I've asked Phil in caucus to give me some dates where he can come to Leadership and have a more robust conversation about it, other than just the emails that we read. So, whenever you got those, that'd be awesome.
Chairwoman Riley, can I just circle back to Finance for a second?
Sure.
Mr. Coburn, since you're the Finance Committee Chair, I guess this is a request for you. Let me know if you want to talk more about that claim fund balance, because that is actual cash, and there was a policy written that there were certain stipulations, like, to protect that account, so that the money could not be taken out of there except to pay employee claims, and I don't know if that's something that you want to look into, well, and maybe tie into the Finance Committee.
Yeah, I'm definitely open to that. I know it's kind of talking about payroll and benefits and insurance being a big portion of that, and yeah, if there is money that's supposed to be kept in the account or fenced just for that, then, yeah, we can definitely explore that.
Right.
Either offline, or, you know, if you want to come to the next Finance Committee as well, we can start...
Yeah, maybe we can meet a little bit earlier to go over it.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
We also started a discussion, because there's been a lot of people that have been asking how they can help, and I know Mr. Longy said today, you know, definitely read to your children this summer, which I'm all down for. So, but we also discussed, because people have been asking, you know, can we have fundraisers and raise money and, you know, bring back, you know, sports, or bring back, you know, after-school clubs? So, we're having that discussion in Leadership and Legal to find out, like, where exactly money can go, if we have to set up a policy to say, you know, if money gets donated, specifically goes here and can only be used for X, Y, and Z. So, we've started that conversation, which will leach out into the Policy Committee, and when we have more information, we plan to share it with everybody. So, everybody knows, you know, where we can go and where we can't go, what we can do and we can't do. And then, we talked about the superintendent search. We worked on the second round, the finalist questions for the interviews. And then we'll probably have another meeting in July to work on setting up that joint meeting for the budget. We'll probably have a discussion with the superintendent who we choose, at that point, I'm assuming, and definitely get on these other items of the Insurance Committee and things like that that I have here. So, that all has to be made. Okay, so, Liaison Reports, Joint Facilities, so...
Cancel this week's meeting.
Yes, and there's no updates since, there's no meeting since 5/23, so, next meeting's on 7/11. So, JFK Building Committee?
I don't have the next meeting.
Nothing, okay. Joint Security?
Next scheduled meeting's July 12.
We met on Friday, June 14.
14, yes. Yep. Okay. I missed that meeting, I did not have childcare in the morning. That was like, right when school ended, and I totally spaced on that one.
There was not a lot of people in attendance, I think there was different things going on, so...
Yeah. The Enfield Mental Health Committee?
There will be a meeting on July 2 to discuss specifics for the July 25 Pediatrician's Dinner given by Kite in support of the mental health concerns in our community. And at this July 2 meeting, there will be a discussion on agenda topics, the order of speakers, and technology needs. In attendance, just to name a few people, will be Brianna Beckstrand, Jaclyn Valley, Michelle Zog, Mr. Longy, Dr. Kalman, and myself.
Question. Jean, what time are you going to do this?
This meeting is scheduled July 2 at 9:00 AM.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Did you have anything to add, Dr. Kalman?
No.
Okay. I looked over there, and I thought you were, sorry, okay. Enfield...
It was a good meeting.
I didn't want to miss him, sorry.
We just all want to go, because there's like happy people in there.
Enfield Cultural Arts Committee?
Nothing to report.
Except that the concert's going on right now.
There's a concert going on.
Okay. Are there any school reports or updates?
Just one from Kite, just a couple of quick announcements. Kite, in partnership with the Enfield Public Schools and the Family Resource Center, is hosting kindergarten camp, a two-week part-day camp for children entering kindergarten who have not had prior preschool experience. The camp is running August 5 through the 16th, so please contact the Kite office for more information. Kite, in partnership with Enfield Head Start, is hosting a mental health dinner for area pediatricians, as you just heard, and their staff to discuss the mental... The staff, by the way, is also being invited, not just the pediatricians, but the office staff, to discuss the mental health needs of young children and students. This is taking place on July 25, and Mr. Longy will be our guest at that meeting. For summer fun, check out Kite's website, www'enfieldkite.org, for a list of park maps and amenities that Enfield has to offer, and that's it.
Awesome. Does En, do they still work with Enfield PlayzOn? Is that still a thing? Or do they kind of...
As what? I'm sorry.
Enfield PlayzOn.
Enfield PlayzOn, that was like, kind of, yeah, they still do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair, I'll just, for Barnard, obviously, there's no significant updates with the school being out, so the, everybody and parents will get a break from the newsletters. I just want to highlight two things. Obviously, kindergarten registration is ongoing, so parents of children, make sure you're registering, and obviously being cognizant of the waiver if that's a requirement. And then also, the Barnard-Crandall PTO has several vacancies, and they're looking for volunteers, so if anybody is interested and willing, the PTO definitely needs you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coburn. Anybody else? Okay. All right, so, 14, Approval of Minutes. You get a motion to approve the regular Board of Ed meeting minutes of May 28, 2024.
Can I have a question? Can we make a motion to approve all of these, or do we have to do them individually?
You could make a motion and do all of them.
Okay.
I would just say to keep them separate, I know, I think I have one amendment, and then I could abstain for one of those.
I move to approve the regular Board of Ed meeting minutes for May 28, 2024.
Motion made by Ms. Pickett. I need a second.
So moved.
Seconded by Ms. LeBlanc. Any discussion?
So, Madam Chair, the only discussion in a, obviously, our recording secretary had a life event, so I didn't email this to her, but reading those minutes in section 10, where it talks about the policy readings, it actually identifies all the policies that we did during that meeting as a first reading, but during that meeting, they were actually the second reading of those policies. So we do need an administrative correction of that. I can follow up with an email after, you know, I don't think we need to amend it, but I just, I kind of wanted to respect, obviously, what was going on with our recording secretary, and I didn't know who to email this weekend about that.
I think there were two extenuating circumstances, why don't you just send the email, and then she can send out an amended version? Would that be sufficient? And then we can re-vote on, on that one? We could all just, like, abstain on this one?
I mean, we could, if we want to, if we want to just table, or if we just want to highlight the amendment? Because that's, it's, yeah, the four, the four policies that we approved, the PDEC and the tape recording of the meetings and the whatever, they were all second readings, and that's why we didn't get those, those, this meeting, but the minutes indicate they're the first.
You've made changes before and still voted the minutes through.
Okay.
So Kathy will watch this and follow up with an email. She'll make the changes.
Do it with the amended...
Yep. So now there's a motion on the floor to amend the minutes per Mr. Coburn's suggestions of the second reading of those policies.
That's correct. Yes, that's correct.
Any other discussion? Okay, so then, show of hands to approve the amended minutes. All in favor? Nine in favor, none against? Okay, cool. All right, and then...
Now I'll make a motion, I'll just keep us moving here.
Go for it.
Now I'll make a motion to approve our special Board of Ed meeting minutes for May 29, 2024.
Seconded.
Motion by Ms. Pickett, seconded by Dr. Kalman. Any discussion?
So I won't make an amendment, but kind of the same thing. I did notice a very minor typos in some of the narrative, so I'll follow up with the recording secretary, but it doesn't even warrant an amendment, it's more grammatical, and I think there was just a couple minor spelling things, so I will, let the record reflect, I'll follow up with the recording secretary, no amendment needed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coburn. Any other discussion? Okay, show of hands in favor? Nine in favor, none against?
Now I make a motion for, to approve the special Board of Ed meeting minutes for June 6, 2024.
Motion by Ms. Pickett, seconded by Dr. Kalman. Any discussion? Yes, Dr. Coburn, I mean, Mr. Coburn.
So that was a special meeting, it wasn't recorded, I wasn't able to watch it. Unfortunately, due to childcare issues, I was not able to be in attendance in that meeting, so I just want to notate that I will be abstaining to approve those minutes, as I don't have firsthand knowledge of them.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, so then, show of hands for, to approve the minutes. So that's eight in favor, any against? No, then one abstention. Okay. All right, 15, Approval of Accounts and Payroll. Mr. Coburn?
All right, I might as well just keep my mic on at this point. All right, so, as a follow-up to the Financing Budget Committee, I'll be reading in expenditures. So, the Finance Committee met on June 3 to review financial statements for the month of May, year-to-date, and examine various documents related to finances. Our review concluded nothing of significance to report to the full Board. Motion being, I move we accept the superintendent certification as follows. Quote, "I hereby certify that in the month of May, total expenditures amount to $7,445,498.25, broken down between payroll totaling $5,442,139.1, and other accounts totaling $2,3,359.24." All payments have been made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted for within the books of accounts, copies of approval for check invoices are properly documented, end quote. This has been prepared by Lorena Sisneros, Business Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Coburn. So, any discussion? I mean, that was the motion, I need a second, sorry.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Ryder. Any discussion? Sensing none, show of hands in favor? Nine in favor, none against?
All right. Next item will be certification of grant and Head Start expenditures. So once again, the Finance Committee met on June 3, 2024, to review financial statements for grants during the month of May, year-to-date, and examine various documents related to finances. Our committee concluded there is nothing significant to report to the full Board. I move we accept the superintendent certification as follows. Quote, "I hereby certify that in the month of May, the total grant and Head Start expenditures amount to $779,734.09, broken down between payroll totaling $338,687.71, and other accounts totaling $441,046.38. All payments have been made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted for within the books of accounts, copies of approvals for check invoices are properly documented," end quote. Document prepared by Lorena Sisneros, Business Manager.
Motion by Mr. Coburn. I need a second. Seconded by Ms. Akri. Any discussion?
I just have a quick comment to make, that this is a monthly duty that we engage in, that I think is being scrutinized, and I think it's important that, like, this could be another interesting thing that maybe comes up in Finance Committee about, like, the importance of this certification and what this truly means.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Any else? Nine in favor, none against? Okay, all right.
So, Madam Chair, I'll just add, there are no line item transfers for this month, but as we are closing the current year budget, and Finance will be meeting on July 8, I do expect them, whenever now we do hold the next regular meeting of the Board, we will be doing line item transfers to close out the '24 budget, including the money from the Town and any ones that were over and under, so, again, as Mrs. Pickett said, there's just a lot of scrutiny and insight. So the next regular meeting of the Board, where we address accounts and payroll and line item transfers, you will hear reconciliation of the FY '24 budget.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Coburn. I appreciate that. All right. Mr. Ryder, do you have any correspondence in Board Communications?
Nothing that hasn't been shared in our packet or in recent communications, thank you.
Okay, all right. And then, so, number 17, Executive Session.
Madam Chair, I move we enter Executive Session to discuss matters relating to personnel.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Coburn, seconded by Ms. LeBlanc. All those in favor? All right, so, all right.
Sorry, I thought we were already...
Nine in favor, none against, and then we'll come back out to vote on 11, E and F, after Executive Session. Thank you. We are going on to 11E, Discussion and Action Regarding Appointing Director Candidates. Okay, so I need a motion to approve Mark Dubey as Arts Director, Joel Sene as Humanities Director, Chris Ponte as Steam Director, and Nick Flynn as the Literacy Director.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion by Ms. Pickett, seconded by Mr. Ryder. Any discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Coburn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'll just quickly highlight that the Board had the pleasure of interviewing these candidates on June 20th. All four candidates met and exceeded expectations with the Board. There were very similar themes between the candidates addressing strong leadership, building relationships, team building, and trust. And I think the Board and the administration has the full confidence that these candidates are the right fit for this role and will help move the district forward into the next fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. Coburn. Mr. Genitis?
I'm just going to say, I'll be abstaining because I didn't get to see any of it.
Okay. Ms. Pickett?
I just want to thank all the candidates for coming and interviewing with us. It was clear that this was a really tough process, and even though it's an exciting opportunity to get this director position, for many of them, it's under tough circumstances and under losing some colleagues. There's clear commitment to shared leadership, continued learning, honoring expertise from their colleagues, and positive steps forward. So thank you to the, to the candidates.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, so, roll call, please.
Roll call. Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
Abstain.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mrs. Acre?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. I look forward to seeing all four of them again. That's great. Okay, so, item 11F, action if any, on termination of tenured teacher contracts. Mr. Long, do you want to give a brief description of why we have to do this?
Yes, unfortunately, this is another residual of the awful decisions that had to be made with the budget cuts. So by state statute, section 10-151D of the Connecticut General Statutes, all tenured teachers have a right to be notified in writing if their position is cut due to budgetary reasons, which has been done. And once that's done, any teacher that... any teacher that has not resigned needs to be read by the Board of Education that their job will be lost due to budgetary reasons. So Chairman Riley, you have a motion in front of you, and there are four, unfortunately, four tenured teachers that we will have to read into the record.
Okay. So I move, in accordance with the provisions of Section 10-151 of the Connecticut General Statutes, that the contracts of employment of the following teachers be terminated effective June 30, 24, as a result of the elimination of the positions to which such teachers were appointed, and the lack of any positions to which such teachers can be appointed, and move further that the superintendent of schools is directed to advise such teachers in writing of this action. The following teachers: Christopher Murphy, Suzanne Hijack, Amy Dunphy, and Melissa Winborn. So I need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Genitis. Any discussion?
So, Madam Chair, I'll just add and reiterate what the interim superintendent said. This is definitely a difficult choice. It's, it's tough times for the district. Unfortunately, due to the budget that was approved and the reorganization of the district, this is almost a, just a very procedural vote that these, due to the reduction enforced, that these individuals need to be read into the record as having not resigned, and that they, you know, still have full due, due process went through and, and rehiring rights according to their contracts.
Anybody else? Okay. Roll call, please.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
Yes.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Abstain.
Mr. Ryder?
Abstain.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes?
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. LeBlanc, second by Mr. Coburn. All those in favor? Raise your hands. Nine in favor, none against. Thank you. Have a good night.